Okay, I want to start streaming. Want to start the recording?
Good evening. I'm Armando Cuellar, President of the WESCO ISD Board of Trustees. This public hearing is being conducted in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least seventy-two hours. The board is meeting by the use of Google meets and telephone transmission, which allows two-way communication for members of the public during public comments. A recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The time now is five thirty-four, and I call this public hearing to order. I'll now begin the roll call. When I call each board member by name, signify your presence by saying here. Mr. Esiro Nito. Mr. Jackie Sustaita.
Present.
Coach Jesse Trevino. Dr. Jaime Rodriguez.
Present.
Mr. Martin Lo Santos.
Present.
Mr. Andrew Gonzalez. And I, the President and Presidents. We let the record show that a quorum of board members are in attendance. Number three, public hearings. On the SR two and SR three spending plan amendment, Dr. Valdez.
Good afternoon, President Cuellar, members of the board, members of the audience. This afternoon, we bring forward a few amendments to the SR two and SR three spending plan. WESCO ISD was awarded federal funds through the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. And of course, a couple of acts were signed into law. And hence, we then have SR two and SR three, which is what we're bringing forward this evening. A plan was created by staff, and meaningful conversations and input and feedback were provided by all stakeholders. But this evening, we are going to present a few amendments. Presenting this evening, the recommended amendments to the spending plan is Mr. John Garlick.
Good evening, Dr. Valdez, Coach Cuellar, members of the board. Just to give a little bit of background, the state has released the last third of the SR three. In order to get that, we have to submit an amendment to our plan for SR three. In addition to what we were supposed to get, they added a small amount, about twenty thousand, to our grant. So, but prior to doing that amendment, we do need to have a public hearing, and we are going to make some recommendations to changes, to change our spending plan. The current spending plan is on the WISD website. It's under Department's federal programs. We're going to make some changes, and once those have been approved, we will update that spending plan and post it, and we'll probably try to move it to the front of the website to make it easier for people to find. So that's why we're looking at amendments this evening. Some of the changes are driven by other issues that have arisen. Our 2022 budget as a district, we're looking at a very large shortfall, about eleven million dollars, caused by ADA shortage of about fifteen hundred students. So that's a major hit to our local fund and ability to retain staff and programs and do the things we normally do. So that's one of the factors driving some of these amendments, how to help out with that for the district. Also factoring into the amendments, there's a COVID-19 school health support grant, about six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, which the district has applied for. It's not competitive, so we should receive it. We'll probably get the NOGA mid to late January. We're going to factor that, those funds, into what we're going to do with our amendment, and I'll explain that in a few minutes. Okay. The changes we're going to make, first of all, we're trying to transfer some money and use it so we can help out with locally. Since we, our original plan, we kind of allocated everything we were planning to do, so we got to pull back some things from that to make those changes. The thing, the changes we're planning to make is we're going to pull one million dollars back from the internet towers. After speaking with technology representative, we can still build towers. We just won't put quite as much money into them upfront. We're going to take one million dollars back from online learning materials, which CNI had. They will still have over two million dollars for online materials over the course of the three years, but we're pulling some of that money back to help us make up some of that deficit. And then we're going to do a ten percent reduction in the, all of the different areas we have for spending, the areas that have not been allocated already. We're not going to touch anything related to personnel or the HVAC. Hopefully, you know, the goal is that when we leave SR behind, we're going to have good airflow in our buildings to show for years to come. But that's the areas that I didn't touch to make up some money to help out with this deficit issue. Now, what we're going to be adding to our spending plan is we're going to be adding to SR two. We're going to add seven point eight million dollars, basically to supplant teacher salaries. And under the ESRS, we are allowed to use the funds to retain staff, and that's what we're basically going to do. In order to do that efficiently, we're looking at basically replacing salaries from second through fifth grade from February through May. The reason we're not going to do it earlier is because we would have to reclassify those salaries, which would incur penalties with TRS. We don't need extra penalties or extra funds going out. The reason we're doing across grade levels is there's a requirement to maintain equity across all of our schools. So if we do it across the grade levels, we can maintain that equity. It looks like we'll end up basically picking up most of second through fifth grade teacher salaries from February through the rest of the year. That'll cost us seven point eight million. That will help us, or help the district, to meet its eleven million dollar shortfall. I've spoken with Mr. Sanchez, and if we can do that, he's looking at the rest of the budget. He thinks he can make it all work if we can help out in that area. So that's why we came up with that number, seven point eight million. In addition, we're also going to add to our SR three, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, which we're going to reclassify. And what it is, is we've previously purchased air cleaners, air purifiers, all about six hundred thousand dollars worth of them. We're going to reclassify those because they can be covered under the COVID health, COVID-19 health grant. And that's going to free up some funds there to do something to help out also. And I'll explain that in the next slide. So in addition, these are the areas we're also looking at for next year. We're looking to supplant in SR two about seven and a half million dollars of teacher salaries for next year. So that'd be for the whole year. It won't affect as many, but those teachers will be being paid out of SR two, SR two funds. And what that's going to do is allow us to move the items we were going to purchase under SR two, which in this case, it was band instruments, about four hundred plus thousand. There was some library redesign furniture, a little over two million, and some HVAC that was covered under SR two. That will be able to be funded next year's budget out of local, because I'm supplanting salaries. For next year in SR three, we're going to supplant twenty-four point two six million dollars in salaries. And that's going to be allow us to do the internet towers out of local. There's a classroom redesign project, which we have, which Mr. Andal has been working on, the elementary classroom redesign, a lot of furniture and stuff involved in that. And then the remainder of the HVAC. Now, the advantages and disadvantages to those moves is when we, the disadvantage, when we move those teacher salaries from local to federal, there's a, about an eight percent difference in benefits we have to pay because TRS, some kind of arcane rules. And I'm not an accountant, so I'll let the accountant types explain that. So we'll lose some of the money there, but we get it back on the back end because when we move the HVAC stuff to local, there's less strings and federal requirements, so we can actually get the job done. We can save some money there. So I think it's going to come up awash, the money we save from the HVAC versus having a little bit extra going out for the personnel. So that's, that's, that's why we're going to do that next year. Now, if you look at those numbers, that's a big chunk of the SR money, but it's also going to assist, under the allowable uses, HVAC is not a problem. The issue with the band instruments, the furniture for the library, the furniture for the redesign, whenever you talk to TEA about, can we do this with the money? Can we do that with the money? The answer is a stock response is if you can justify it. Now, in my mind, I can justify it, but nobody cares what's in my mind. It's the auditor's mind that I've got to do. And so I, they think differently, so this just takes it off the table. It'll be in local. I don't have to justify it to the auditor now. I can just, salaries are much easier to justify. Does that make sense? The other thing we're going to do is the six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, which we're going to save from the air purifiers being reclassified to the COVID-19 safety health grant. That's, that's going to allow us, right now, under SR three, in our original plan, we were going to have medical assistance on the campuses for one year to help out with all of the return to in-person instruction issues that might arise in the nurses station, all of that extra work that's required out of nurses stations. By reclassifying those air purifiers, we can use that six hundred and thirty-eight thousand basically to buy another year for the medical assistance. So currently, they would, that extra person would expire at the end of this year. Now, we're going to have the medical assistants to help out with our nurses, excuse me, nursing stations for an extra year. That'll have the benefit of allowing us some flexibility with regarding, regarding whatever variant happens to come up next after Omicron. It'll also help us out as far as just working with kids next year's, our regular cold and flu seasons and all of those requirements. Plus, it'll give us another person in the nurses station for that year if we're trying out any kind of telemedicine, anything like that. So there's some benefits to doing that, getting an extra year with an extra person in there. And so that's why we're looking at doing that. So what does that leave us? These are the funds in SR two. There's the ADA hold harmless. That was for the ADA in the previous year. The indirect cost, there's, that's the money we will have going into learning loss after the amendment under SR two. SR two does not have a minimum learning loss requirement. Personnel covered under SR two, they're still there. Safety materials, there's not a lot of safety materials going to be left under SR two. There's the second through fifth grade teachers we're looking at for 2022, that's this year. And then seven point five million in teacher salaries for next year. I'm not specifying a grade level yet, because we're going to have to actually narrow that down with HR and salaries to make sure we, you know, get the maximum bang for the buck. The recruiting and retention stipend that was under SR two is still there. That's the stipend the board recommended for next year. That was the two thousand dollar retention stipend for the follow-on year. So those are the numbers under SR two. If you add up those numbers, there's about two hundred thousand dollars that's not directly attributed there. It's basically there, kind of as some cushion for learning loss based on inflation, or whatever we can put that in if we need it. SR three, the way it would change, there's still one, well, one, the number at the top is the new allocation. It was, it went up by about twenty thousand. The construction that's there, that's the stuff we already did. So we've already allocated, used those funds. That was, there was one of the AC projects, that was the hand washing stations, the bottle filling stations. So that's already off the table. That's where that one million came from. There's the indirect cost, learning loss. That, we do have a requirement to have twenty percent, and our learning loss requirement comes out to we got to spend twelve point six million. Now, if you're looking at that and you're saying, yes, but he only has eleven point five four million there, that's direct learning loss. Under the personnel, we have another three and a half million, which is the accelerated learning aids, which they will count for learning loss to help us meet that twenty percent requirement. So learning loss there doesn't include those aids. They're under this, they're under the personnel cost right below it. So that helps us meet, make sure we're over, over the twenty percent. We're about twenty-five, twenty-three, twenty-five percent right now, so we're good to go on that. Safety, that's various materials we're spending on safety under SR three, which is on the spending, currently on the spending plan. There's two recruiting and retention stipends under SR three. There's the one we paid out this year, which has mostly been paid out as of December. The only ones left are the people who chose a monthly payout. And then there's the two thousand dollar stipend for the year after next, which is the third year. The vaccine stipend is up there. That's supposed to get paid out in, in January, which I know- That's supposed to get paid out in, in January, which I, I know Carlos has been having all the information coming in and all that, so we can get that done. And then there's the teacher salaries out of next year's budget, which we'll get the exact what number of teachers and all that. And just like the, the, this year, we will do it by grade level, so it's stretched across the district, so we can maintain the equity requirements. So that's how the ESER II and ESER III, kind of a broad look at the, the spending, how it's going to change. And in the end, that will help the district meet the shortfall caused by the ADA this year. It'll, it'll allow us to do the HVAC projects and save a little bit of the money on the construction costs because of its local versus federal. And we'll supplant, it'll, it'll also make it easier as far as the furnitures for the libraries and the classroom, elementary classroom redesign and the band instruments, to, to purchase those without having to deal with, okay, is it or is it not? So those are the, that's kind of the funds there. Do you have any questions for me or discussion or if I'm not, wasn't real clear on anything?
I'm just a little confused. When I see second to fifth grade teachers and then teacher salaries, equity requirements, what I'm, is, I, what is it? Is it something extra they're going to be getting apart from the regular salary or what? I'm understanding.
Equity requirements is a federal requirement on the grant. That if we supplant salaries, we can't use it to reduce services for our higher, low-income schools. In other words, we have to maintain equity. It has nothing to do with what the teachers get paid. It's as a district, we have to show that we've maintained equity for our schools. So we can't say, I'm going to cut these five schools, move more of their money to federal, and these are all going to be funded local.
Okay.
It, it has, it, it doesn't affect their salaries. It affects us as a district because if we don't maintain equity, then they can come back and say, okay, you need to give us some money back.
Okay, I get it. That was my confusion. I was thinking you were going to add 7.8 million to second to fifth grade. So what, wow, what are we doing? But I get it. You're trying to move the federal to the local.
I'm trying to, and we're, we're going across the board. That way, we keep a balance as we, because what we're doing is we're reducing our, our local salaries.
Okay.
And if, as long as we do it across the board, it shouldn't affect our equity, how we're serving all of the, the lower income students equitably across the district.
I see.
The big area they watch is the special education services, but it can affect all of our other areas also.
Okay.
Any other questions? I do want to open it up if, I don't know if there's any public questions or comments because the, the purpose of this is to get any feedback on the changes from anybody who might have any.
Are we, are we now going to item four?
Is that the comments and questions?
Where we have public comments?
No, it's right now.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll stand by.
Coach was asking.
Before we go, let the record reflect that Coach Esposito Trevino joined this hearing at 5:50.
My, my concern with this, Dr. Valdez or, or sir, is this is, you know, I know you, you presented this information. Obviously, I walked in late, but why doesn't this get presented to us or given to us with, with our packet so we can actually review it and then have questions instead of just it being presented to us? And it just seems, I know I caught the tail end of it, but it just seems like it was very rush rush and we don't get a chance to analyze this.
And that's on me, sir. The, the whole issue arose about, this is about two weeks ago, when there was a discussion of we've got, we've got this budget shortfall. That's where it came to my attention. And so then it was, okay, how can we help with federal funds? And I'll be honest, sometimes I'm not the brightest, you know, candle in the room. It takes me a while to figure it out, come up with something. And then as I worked on that 7.8 million, it suddenly struck me, I can solve a bunch of other problems. And so that, the timeliness is, is there.
Okay.
This doesn't, the, the amendment process to do this, we don't have to do it today. We don't have to do it tomorrow. We can, I mean, it, it's, the grant is, is for three, three years, we can amend it as we need to. I just want to make aware, this is the thinking that I've come up with, and we shared it with the superintendent and the doctor, doctor, Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Aguilar, we all sat down and, hey, does this look like it'll solve some of these problems? And, and so that's why we're sharing it.
So it's not set in stone. It's kind of fluid. It's moving as we need to.
This is, yeah, this is even slow setting concrete.
It's bringing it forth in this forum, a public forum and for the trustees to review tonight, but it's not taking action. It's just proposing the amendments and providing, and having the forum and the, the setting for the public to provide any feedback. Because we have vetted it through campus leaders, through, we had parents, the parent liaisons, we've had all, all the department leaders there, and so it's been vetted through, heavily through the, through district staff and, and now it's bringing it to you on the, you know, the think tank and what the thinking was behind these amendments.
And, and, and on the timeline on that, and we shared it with the principals at their principals meeting last week. For that meeting, we had all of the community aides and parent specialists there so they could get it, hey, here's what we're looking at, so that if parents came into the campuses and wanted information, they could give information. Mr. Sanchez, you know, posted an advertisement for this meeting, so if the public has questions or comments, basically, this is not done. This is just, here's what we're throwing out to look at, it's kind of, and then whatever comments, changes we get tonight, then we'll go back to the drawing board to get it done.
Correct.
So that's, that's what it is.
The ESER grant runs all the way to the school year 23, 24.
Yeah, we've carried over. We've got plenty of time.
As the years go through, and a lot of districts have already implemented this process as far as reclassification and, and changing the, the funding sources for certain staff that qualify under ESER, just to, like he said, free up local funds when I, I.
And I'll be honest, that's, and, and that would be on me. I didn't realize that it was a, a way to do this that would actually have other benefits. Otherwise, I would have done it six months ago when we started this whole thing. So I'm just, I'm playing catch-up on that. But I, I think that in the long run, this will benefit at the teacher and the staffing level, the money is green. It's just, it's coming from this channel versus that channel. It doesn't change any salaries. All it does is a change of funding, funding source. The reason we're going to February is because we don't want to pay any kind of penalties for TRS or anything like that. So if we do it in February forward, then we're okay there. That's why, why we're doing it that way.
It's really just a shifting of one account to another, the shifting of.
Yeah, we're just paying it out of this account versus that account.
Sources, the funding sources.
The only item you did mention that caught my attention was the, the 638,000 for adding it to an extra year of medical assistance.
Yeah, that's a separate.
And you mentioned possibly for telehealth. I know they were very hesitant to even start this year. They were just going to do a pilot school or two pilot schools. We're a little hesitant because of everything going on. I think it's settled down now. We said in January, two schools wanted to start, but I'm thinking if we're going to be adding an extra year for medical assistance, then that's because we're really going to be using these people and really implementing programs that are going to benefit our students' health.
And, and I spoke to Ms. Kaufman because this is really a grant that she, that 638,000 is a grant that she worked on.
Okay.
And, and it had, you can buy this, or you can do this, or you can do this. And you weren't allowed to do salaries or personnel, but you can purchase those purification, air cleaning type systems. And after coordinating with Mr. Sanchez, looking at how much we purchased this year since that grant began, we can basically reclassify those purchases. So they will come out of that money, those air purifiers, like, like we bought all of those little small air puri, all of those things will come out of that money, and that will free up the 600,000 to basically add an extra year of the medical assistance. Because from talking to Ms. Kaufman, they, they have gotten a lot of mileage out of those people helping out. And, and it, it just gives us a little more depth. In a normal school year, you're dealing with, you know, flu and all those things. This year, we're dealing with trying to come out of the pandemic, and I, I don't have the tea leaves to say what's going to happen next. So it just gives us a, a little more.
Okay. So there's been positive feedback about having those medical assistants. It has made, it has impacted positively.
I saw Ms. Kaufman around here somewhere. Yeah, she, but she said, yeah, that was positive, and that was something that, you know, the campuses would definitely be able to use.
Okay. Sounds good.
One, one area that stands out for me is ESER II and ESER III, the safety issues. I know for safe, for ESER II, we're at 149, 149, 149,000. And for ESER III, we jumped to 3.45, 3 million.
And what it is is, I've had to shift the money, you know, when we, when we're buying the various things, some of them, we've shifted from ESER II to ESER III, and I need to solidify that with this amendment to, to make things balanced. Because ESER II, one, it's less money, it's a shorter suspense, and with the teacher salaries, we're, we're going to spend most of the money on those salaries. So I actually would have to move some of the stuff that we were going to pay at, under ESER II to ESER III. So it's, it's still federal money. It's just going from pocket A to pocket B.
I guess my concern, so, I believe right now, our, our issues, safety issues is right now.
Mm-hmm. And that we still have the money to spend.
149,000 would, would be able to cover some of those concerns that we have with safeties.
The, the 149,000 under ESER II and the 100, and the, the money under ESER III, those are concurrents. We just spend them both. We are currently spending out of both, both funds right now, depending on.
So the 3.45 is, we're actually pulling from year three as well right now?
Yeah, we're, we're, we are basically, the grant doesn't say you have to spend 20 million this year, 20 million that year, 20 million this year. Okay? The only things that we have really lined out that are going to be, have multiple years is like the stipends will be multiple years, the, but we're, we're trying to front load, for example, the HVAC. If we can get that done, there's no point in waiting until the third year, get it done. You know, the band instruments, which is what we're moving this to, to get, let, you know, if we can get it done in one big pop, you know, we don't need to do a little here, a little there, a little, we're just going to get it all, get it done and be, be done with it. Same thing with the, the internet towers. So a lot of our funds, we're front loaded to spend it. And I do apologize for, for the lack of timeliness. That's on me. I was just trying to figure out how to skin this thing.
You're a little spazerosi, huh?
I'm sorry.
Do, do we have any more questions up here? Because, because the public is, is welcome to share any comments that, that you may have.
I guess speaking as a parent of Wesleyco students myself, and then news, there's been a lot of, you know, the shootings and this violence and all these things happening that God forbid ever happens in our district, but I'm looking at safety here. Have we thought about adding anything extra to our schools that can help us feel safer?
Okay, the, the, on the viol, the gun violence or, or whatever you want, that would not be an ESER when that would be really local.
Yeah, okay.
And I don't want to, I'll, I'll have to defer to local funds on that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I saw safety, but you're right. It's not, it's not pandemic related.
But the thing is, is that part of what we're doing is hopefully, we're going to free up enough money from the local to get some flexibility there, hopefully. I, I, I don't know how, how much.
That's the ultimate goal of this.
I'm sure you can probably tie it in somehow because it's all mental issues related. It's causing some of the safety concerns and so forth.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you, you.
And we have targeted this social.
As I mentioned with the, the band instruments, I think it's maybe before you got here, and the, the classroom redesign, I can ju, I think I can justify that.
Yes.
You know, and, and I've done it long enough. I think I can justify just about anything under any circuit, you know, if you give me enough time, I'll figure it out. The problem is the auditors have to agree with my justification. I can make myself feel good when I go, yep, that's good, but the auditor has to feel good too.
But, but everything you've done has, you, you're following a protocol that's been set for you so that we know that we are in compliance with what's allowable, right?
Yes. I have, and, and what happens is, is if you, if you want to look at the process, let's say CNI wants to purchase some software to help students recover learning loss. The first thing they do on that to purchase anything with ESER money is they submit to me a request for funds form, and on that, they have to justify, here's why we're doing it. You know, I have the basics framework, which I laid out, and that's on the, the funding plan, and, and if you remember those previously, small print sheets and all that, it's all there. But to actually get the funds and spend it, the first thing they do is have to justify it, and they use the FAQ, which has got the allowable uses there, you know, what applies, what are we, and what are we using it for? So that I can see that, yeah, this is related to that. It's not, it's not me writing up the allowable use for every single thing. So it's the, the people who are using that, using those funds who do that allowable use. So for example, when the business office says, hey, we want to purchase these small air cleaners, they also submit an allowable use, here's where it's allowed. And then that, once that's in, then we put it in account. It's okay, we put the money in. If it meets thresholds where it has to go to the board, it'll show up on a board agenda. If it doesn't, it'll show up as a regular purchase requirement. And then we have various accountability requirement. For example, right now, we're doing the maintenance of equity work on the previous year to show that, yeah, we're maintaining equity. We haven't submitted that yet because the U.S. Department of Education pushed it back, but that's there. Then somewhere, I'm sure in the spring, we'll have to report how we spent our money, how does it match with what we said we were going to do? Does it match the 20% for learning loss? And then that's all auditable, depending on when the state says it's our turn. And I would, I would guess the state will, for us, will do what they call a random validation, which is what they do on our other state and federal programs. This will probably have a more stringent one sometime in the coming year. They haven't laid those guidelines out yet. But in the meantime, whenever I get some clarification or Mr. Sanchez, when he goes to one of his TASBO-type conferences, you know, we look at it, make sure, hey, are we meeting the requirements? Because in the end, we, you know, we, you know, federal requirements, they have a lot of strings and hoops you have to jump through.
I think it's real important to note also that when TEA, when they're distributed funds, whether they're state or local, even though you're getting guidance from a department, the auditing department is completely separate. So when those individuals come, like you said, Mr. Garland, it's, it's really to their interpretation on what, what they see the program guidelines are for, for the program and how you spent the money. And so sometimes, yeah, you have.
Yeah, they don't give straight answers. Yep, this is good. They say, if you can justify it. And that's, that's where the, and I think I could justify the items and just keep them under ESER, but to be on the safe side, this is a, a safer way to go by. And as Mr. Dela Sanz mentioned, a lot of districts have done some of this also as a way to make sure they're meeting the requirements.
Because they too, throughout the state, have seen a shortfall in enrollment and average daily attendance percentages.
And that, that's, that's an ongoing issue.
And it's to mitigate, correct.
The district has to address is, is the shortfall.
Dr. Valdez, are we hearing from TEA in regards to possible relief for ADA?
No. It's limited. It's only for the first six weeks, so far that they've announced, and that's it. So it's limited relief from the state.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Garland and staff, thank you very much for this information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item five, adjournment. The time now is 6:08, and this hearing, public hearing, is adjourned. We will now go into a regular board meeting.
Good evening. I'm Armando Cuellar, president of the Wesleyco YSD Board of Trustees. This regular board meeting is being conducted in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. The board is meeting by use of Google Meet and telephone transmission, which allows two-way communication for members of the public during public comments. A recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The time now is 6:09, and I call this meeting to order. I now begin the roll call. Call each board member by name, signify your presence by saying aye when I call your name. Mr. Isidoro Nieto?
Present.
Mr. Jack Saito?
Present.
Coach Esposito Trevino?
Present.
Dr. Jaime Rodriguez?
Present.
Mr. Mark de los Santos?
Present.
Mr. Andrew Gonzalez? Let the record show that a quorum of board members is in attendance. Item three, opening prayer. Dr. Valdez.
Yes, I call on Carlos Rovledo to lead us in the introductions of our opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance and awards and recognitions.
Thank you very much. Dr. Valdez, Mr. Board President and members of the board, I would like to introduce Mario Castillo, a pre-K teacher from Northridge Elementary School, who delivered the invocation. Castillo, a pre-K teacher from North Bridge Elementary School, who delivered the invocation.
Good evening, board. Go ahead, bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, we want to say thank you for giving us another day of life. Thank you for your love, your mercy, and your grace you give us abundantly every day. We ask you, Father, that you bless each single person in this room that took time from their busy schedule to make this meeting. We ask the Holy Spirit to be our guidance and fill this score, school board with wisdom to make the best, best decisions for our students, the staff, and for the community of Westlaco. The decisions that are being made today may have a positive impact. We ask you, Father, to give us peace so that we may come together as a community and keep protecting all employees of Westlaco safe at all times. Grant us the community to always seek your will in all we do and say. All glory be to you, loving God, now and always through Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Item four, Pledge of Allegiance, Texas Pledge, Dr. Valdez.
Yes. Mr. Rovledo, you may proceed with the introductions.
Tonight, we'd like to recognize a couple of our students who are gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge.
If you all can please step forward, come up, we'll say a few words about you, right up here. Thank you very much.
With us tonight, first, we have Evelyn Perez, who is a fourth grader at North Bridge Elementary, and she is the daughter of Jessica and Bernardo Perez. Evelyn loves to read. She has read over two million words and is part of the Battle of the Books Club. She loves science, and she would, one day, love to be a family practice doctor. How about a big hand for Evelyn Perez? We would also like to recognize their parents. They can please stand and be recognized, her parents. Also with us tonight is Joel Lawrence Casadis, who is a fifth grader at North Bridge, and he is the son of Cynthia and Joel Casadis. Lawrence practices and competes in Tai Kwon Do tournaments. He loves to read, and his favorite subject is science. He would like to be a space scientist and work in NASA one day. How about a big hand for Joel Lawrence Casadis? And will his parents please stand and be recognized, the Casadis? And now will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge?
Y'all ready? When are you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas Pledge?
I am in the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Item five, Awards and Recognizations, Dr. Valdez.
Yes, Mr. Rovledo, you may proceed with the awards and recognitions.
All right, tonight, we want to recognize some very talented artists from the, um, both high schools, who were, received some accolades in the All-Region Band and All-Region Honor Symphonic Band. Let's recognize our students as they walk into the room from Westlaco East High School. Everybody's here from Westlaco East, or do we have Westlaco High here as well? No? Westlaco High as well? Let's have a big hand for those who are here from Westlaco High as well. Thank you very much.
And if you wanna ask the board member to help out?
Who's next? Okay. All right, so as I say your name, uh, we'll say a few words about you, and if you could just step forward so that we could recognize you and you could receive a certificate. All right, we're gonna start off first. We wanna congratulate the Westlaco East High School and Westlaco High School Band students for their tremendous success and performance in the All-Region Band. Several students received the prestigious honor of earning the All-Region Honors and Symphony Band Distinction. We'll start off with Westlaco East High School, Honors Band and advancing to pre-area, playing the flute, Julia Lopez. Earning Symphony Band Distinction and advancing to pre-area are the trumpet, George Castillo. Also Symphony Band Distinction, advancing to pre-area, the French horn, Sarah Hernandez. We have freshmen making the District Band. We'll start off with alto sax, Priscilla Caballero. Trombone, Logan Perryman. Alto sax, Kevin Urbelcava. Advancing to pre-area are the trumpet, Jason Gonzalez, or Garza, sorry. Playing the tuba, Ruby Espinosa. She's not here, she's not here today. And we would also like to recognize their band director, Armando Cuellar. Mr. Cuellar. Representing Westlaco High School, earning the Honors Band Distinction and advancing to pre-area, we'll start off with the flute, Cesar Cortez. In the percussion, Fernando Perez. Also percussion, Anthony Ansissel. The clarinet, Raymond Sanchez. Also advancing to area here now, the trumpet, second chair, Anthony Ortiz. Third chair, trumpet, Isabella Sanchez. Earning Symphony Band Distinctions are on the flute, Angela Reyes. Also on the flute, Christian Rodriguez. Advancing to pre-area, euphonium, Ronaldo Cavazos. Alto sax, Christian Aguilar. Trombone, Angel Colon. On the horn, we have Litsi Savio. Playing the trumpet, trumpet, Alex Hernandez. Euphonium, Francisco Rojas. District Band members also, trumpet, Karina Martinez. On the trombone, Ismael Ibarra. Advancing to pre-area, on the trumpet, Angel Guerra. And we would also like to recognize band director for Westlaco High School, Rodrigo Once again, band students, congratulations. You may exit this way. Oh, yes, parents. As they walk out, parents, can you please stand and be recognized, parents?
Do we have a photo? And this? Okay. If we can get the-
Okay. Up next, we would like to, um, celebrate a special recognition. Every year, a Texas-grown Christmas tree stands in the House Chamber at the Texas Capitol during the holiday season. House members are invited to select a constituent to imagine and create a Christmas ornament that depicts their Texas House District in a special way. This year, Tanya Cano and her creation were selected to represent not only District Thirty-nine, but Westlaco and Westlaco East High School. Her ornament will be seen by thousands of Capitol visitors throughout the holidays. We would like to say a congratulations to Tanya Cano. She is not here tonight. Is Mr. Miller here tonight? Miller? Nope. Okay. We wanna recognize though, Mr. Miller, who is her art teacher, so congratulations, Tanya, once again. That'll do the accolades for this evening. Uh, yes, all we, yes, we just have the proclamations.
Item six, proclamation, Dr. Valdez.
Yes, we have one proclamation. Um, it'll be, uh, Mr. Rovledo presenting this evening's proclamation, School Board Recognition Month, January twenty twenty-two.
That's right, we have School Board Recognition Month coming in, uh, coming up next month, so let me read this. Whereas a mission of the public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and an ever-changing world, and whereas local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child, and whereas local board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students, and whereas local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system, and whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district, therefore be it resolved that Dr. Chris Valdez, interim superintendent of the Westlaco Independent School District, does hereby declare and appreciate to the members of the Westlaco ISD School Board a proclamation for the month of January twenty twenty-two, School Board Recognition Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Item seven, further comments.
Somebody's got rules for me right? I know you do. My name is Melissa Crink, um, my address, eight oh six East State, uh, Westlaco, Texas.
There's, there's usually something I hear, Ms. Crink, uh, you know, go through a little, but I don't, I don't see any paperwork.
I promise to be nice.
Let me continue to look up here.
It's on the computer. Just click on it.
Let's see.
Refer to technology now. Hold on. Is it here? The script of what?
Oh, did you get it?
On the screen there. Well, we, you've already addressed, yeah, who you are, and, uh, you're to address only matters that concern the school district. The, the district will not tolerate any disruptive behavior by any member of the audience or the speaker. If you do not abide by, then you will be directed to cease and leave the meeting. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, the Board of Trustees may not deliberate on any comment made by a member of the public on a subject that is not included on the agenda posted with notice of this meeting. As per the Texas Attorney General, the scope of board discussion subject, uh, for a subject not part of the meeting agenda is limited to only a proposal by a board member to place on the subject on a future board agenda. Mrs. Crink, you have, or Ms. Crink, you now have the floor.
All right. It's good to see you all, and Coach, especially good to see you and to see you doing well. So, um, just wanted to come before you, um, mainly I have more questions than, than comments, per se. It was just, uh, this fall, I think, whenever I remember Sergio Garcia doing a presentation for you all, uh, that Mr. Bissett was recommending that possibly you would consider renaming the, the PAC Center for Mrs. Peterson. Uh, I think I'm here because Tues, Tuesday was the anniversary of her passing, so brought it, brought it to mind, but I guess, um, I just lack clarity in, in what the process is or exactly the steps that, that we go through to have that, uh, take place. I'm here as one person, but I can promise you that I represent a lot of people. a lot of people that feel she's very deserving in that. And a lot of people who, a lot of teachers that we have in the district that I know that were Westlaco East graduates that give her a lot of credit for the fact that they went in teaching. Gosh, I'm gonna be mad at myself tomorrow for helping you get through this. But anyway, um, I started checking with some people and I, I was, felt like I was kind of appointed to check, to check with you about this and, and what's going on. Uh, I had what I called my, my twenty-five for twenty-five, which was twenty-five people who promised me that they would have twenty-five people that would call you or email you or text you to let the, you know, but, you know, when I surpassed the twenty-five very quickly. Um, I also noticed the other day that the tribute video that you did for Ms. P. last year has over fifty thou, almost fifty-five thousand views, which I'd be hard pressed to think that there's any other video that we've had in the district that got more support. So if you would, Sergio, whoever, if you would just let me know what the process is and what steps we need to take and what I can do, how I can help to see if we can get that done for her, I would greatly appreciate. Okay? Thank you.
Item eight, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Valdez.
Good evening, President Cuellar, trustees, and members of the audience. This evening's Superintendent's Report includes House Bill Three Board Adopted Goals Evaluation. So this is a, a moment when we measure our progress. Um, of course, House Bill Three amended Texas Education Code to add sections eleven point one eight five and eleven point one eight six to include plans that target early childhood literacy and math and college career and military readiness for our high school students. Um, under House Bill Three, school boards are required to adopt plans in early childhood and CCMR. Now, keep in mind, this was pre-pandemic when this was launched by, um, school districts and their Board of Trustees. Um, an annual review is required by the board at a public meeting, hence that's why we are here this evening to present the, uh, the monitoring of our HB Three Board Adopted Goals. Uh, we do have our lead presenter, uh, Mr. Abel Aguilar, our Assistant Superintendent uh, for Curriculum and Instruction Elementary Education, who will take the lead in presenting with the team. And, uh, you may proceed, Mr. Aguilar.
Thank you, Dr. Valdez. Mr. Board President, members of the board, uh, good evening. As, uh, Dr. Valdez mentioned, uh, we are gonna do the annual review for our HB Three Board Adopted Plans and Goals. This, these goals were adopted, uh, by the board last year, and it's, we're not taking them up for a, a discussion, an action item, because there's not gonna be any changes that we're proposing in our presentation today. And the reason behind that, we wanna go through this year, through the specific and quantifiable goals, to have a year's full, uh, worth of data to look at. If the committee, as you can see there on the next slide, Mr. Trevino, has worked very hard and looking at this very carefully with the goals, along with our campus administrators and everyone involved, looking at the specificity for those goals. If we determine after this year that there is a need to change those goals, then we will bring it for the board, uh, to consider for approval moving forward. But we don't want to decrease a goal, as the saying says, we want to continue increasing the effort and moving forward to attain those goals for our students. So at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to our team as they're gonna be presenting. Some will be presenting, uh, uh, through the slides online, and some will be, uh, here present, uh, to present. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Valdez, Board President Cuellar, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to present on House Bill Three, uh, Board Plans and Goals. Essentially, this is an update or an evaluation, uh, required by statute and where we stand at this point. Uh, as, uh, Ms. Aguilar mentioned, that we wanna be able to evaluate this upcoming year or where we stand right now, to determine, because the House Bill Three Plans and Goals is a living document, and we can adjust as we see, uh, as, as is needed. So, uh, the plan requirements, as you can see, uh, under House Bill Three, you all have already adopted these plans and goals, you, you, if you remember, this was done last year, uh, for literacy and- You, if you remember, this was done last year for literacy and math in the early childhood and also CCMR, or college career, military readiness. And all plans have to include the following, as listed here. Assign a district-level administrator, that's Ms. Aguilar. An annual review, that's the reason we are here today. An annual report, and that will be posted before we leave on the break. And also a specific quantifiable annual goals, right, or goals for a period of five years. These are long-term. The, as a reminder, the early childhood plan requirements, the, what is required is an annual goals for aggregate student growth on third grade math and reading. So essentially, the, the, the purpose of the goal, the purpose of the plans or the goals is that our pre-K, K, first, second are ready for third grade. It also requires annual targets for each group. As an example, like our emergent bilinguals or those students that are service under special education. It also requires targeted professional development for any campus that the board sees that may not be hitting that target, right? And so that, that's also a requirement. And of course, as we just mentioned right now, the annual target also requires that we set goals for students like our emergent bilinguals and those that are in the ESL program. Also for CCMR, the college career, military readiness, also annual targets or annual goals for aggregate student growth on student achievement, domain one, right? We're not gonna give you a lesson here on all the domains, but just so that you'll have a bird's eye view. Domain one and domain three with respect to accountability, they pretty much bring in the same data with respect to college career, military readiness. So not only are we held accountable with respect to CCMR on the state level, domain three, which is the federal, what we used to call the old AYP, some of you may remember. It now, of course, brings in that same data, so they hold us accountable with respect to the federal, federal requirements. I'm gonna turn this over, and presenting virtual will be Ms. Arcadia Longoria, who is our elementary reading language arts strategist.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Good evening, Dr. Ca, uh, sorry, Dr. Valdez, Mr. Board President and Board Members. Thank you for being here tonight. So we're going to go ahead and start with the Early Childhood Literacy Professional Development Plan. As you can see here, there are a few measures that we are using to track the HB3 goals. So the academic progress screeners include in pre-K, the Circle Progress Monitoring Instrument. In kindergarten, we have the Techs Kia instrument. And at first and second grade, we are using our IStation Progress Monitoring Monthly ISIP. So our action steps include that all of the K through third grade teachers and administrators, along with special ed educators, will complete the Science of Reading, Texas Reading Academies over the next three years. We are currently in Cohort Two, which involves a combined 99 K through third regular ed and special ed teachers. We completed 100 teachers, 90 teachers, 10 administrators last year in Cohort One. And we are projected to service the remaining 80 to 90 educators in Cohort Three, which is the final year of the Texas Reading Academies next year. And all of this is done based on all of the goals that we have set here to date. So literacy trainees will address the new integration of reading and writing, along with our standards and accelerated learning. And we are consulting with our local education service center and, of course, using our TEACHS resources system for planning mastery, accelerated instruction, and continuing to revisit the, the STAR redesign through our professional development as well. So here we have the overall Early Childhood Literacy Board Outcome Goal, which is the percent of third grade students that score meets grade level or above on STAR reading will increase from 45% to 55% by June of 2024. So our goal for 2021 was at 49%. So that was pre-COVID. So then, of course, we, we are in our new reality and our actual percentage was 23%. So we know we have our work cut out, but we are continuing to, you know, to push through and move forward and provide the best support that we, we can for our teachers and our students. This 23% is based on 44% of the students that were able to come in in May and take that STAR test. As you know, TA offered an option for parents to send in their students. We had a total of 44% and 23% was our actual score. Next slide. And now Ms. Peña will inform you about the Circle Progress Monitoring System.
Good evening, Dr. Valdez, Mr. Cuellar, and Board Members. I just want to talk to you briefly about the Circle Progress Monitoring System. And that is an assessment that is online, offered to all districts in the state of Texas, free of charge. And we use it with our students, our pre-K students, our four-year-olds, twice a year. We do the beginning of the year and the end of year. We do monitor the reading and the math very closely as we also monitor social studies and science with the students. But for right now, we're gonna be covering the literacy component. As you know, our four-year-olds, many of them, most of them come to us not knowing how to read, not knowing their numbers. And that's okay, because they're four-year-olds. They're learning. Their brains are developing. And so when we do the first test, the first test, we usually have about 4% to 10% of our students doing well on the assessment. So at the end of the year, which is the scores you're gonna see, we get at least 50% of those students doing well. We're very lucky. Why? Because their little brains are still working. And if they're not ready to learn something at that age, well, they're not ready. It's developmental, so eventually they're going to learn it. But they are very quick studies, and everybody who has worked with these students, they know that they're sponges. Their brains soak up a lot more information than the adult brain, so they do get to learn a lot. So on the Circle Progress Monitoring, what we're monitoring is growth, student growth. What are their skills, their foundational skills for reading? We observe, the teachers observe, and then they test them on syllabication, sounds, rhymes, vocabulary, that type thing. Obviously, we don't test them to find out if they can read, because a lot of them are not at that stage yet. So for progress measure in, the progress measure in literacy, the yearly target goals. Our goal in 2020 was 55%. We don't know what it would have been, because that's when COVID hit, the students went home, and that was that. For 2021, our target was 58% of the students passing. Unfortunately, they were still at home. The thing with the test is that it is done one-on-one. The teacher sits with the student, they ask them questions, and then the, the teacher's the one who presses the computer, depending on the answer that the student gave. So again, we don't have scores. But our goal for this year, we're hoping that 61% of our students do pass. For 2023, 64%, and for 2024, 67%. Down in the bottom on closing the gaps, again, you have the scores, the, the target scores, and then also by population, sub-populations. Special ed, economically disadvantaged, and English learners. Okay, so I will pass this to Ms. Longoria again.
Thank you, Ms. Peña. So here we have the second measure for early childhood literacy, and that is the percent of K students that score on track on Techs Kia will increase from 40 to 50% by June of 2024. So last year, we continued to implement at the end of the year, we had our IStation. This year, for the end of the year, we'll be tracking progress with Techs Kia, as last year was our pilot year. So we were at 37% with our board goal here. We fell a little short than our projected goal, but given the circumstances, I am very hopeful and excited about the progress and growth that our students are showing each and every day. So we will continue to track this goal as, as we move forward. Next slide. Here we have the third progress measure for literacy, and that is the percent of first through second grade students that score levels three to five on IStation's ISIP will increase from 44 to 54% by June of 2024. So here you can see, given the, the current reality, again, that our students were very close to meeting that goal that we have set for this board plan. They fell a little short, just under, you know, 48%, we were at actual 45%. So we are continuing to track our, our student growth and continue to provide the support that students are needing with the accelerated learning in mind and continuing to offer all of the professional development and all of the resources that are going to help us move all of our students forward. So I'm excited about the growth that we are seeing and hopeful that we will reach our goal at the end of this year at 50%. Next slide. And now Ms. Perla Chavez will continue with the math board goals. Thank you.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, and Dr. Valdez. I will proceed with the presentation of the Early Childhood Math Board Outcome Goals. As approved in 2020, the mandate states that, our goal states that the percentage of third grade students that meets grade level or above on STAR will increase from a 55%. Data coming from the last STAR assessment pre-COVID in 2019 to a 70% in June 2024. Our progress measure was paused in the year 2020 with the cancellation of the STAR test due to the pandemic. And transitioning into 2021, post-pandemic and with all the learning loss, our goal was set at a 61%, ending at a 15%. In math, of course, this data does reiterate the effects of COVID-19 school closure in specifically the math content and the effects of virtual learning and the, the lack of hands-on and immediate feedback from the teachers. Like Ms. Longoria mentioned, this data does come from only 44% of our student population, those students that did come in to test in the year 2021, last academic school year. Next slide, please. Ms. Peña will go ahead and start with the first progress measure and evaluation for our elementary students in math.
So, yes, the other portion of the Circle Progress Monitoring for our pre-kinders students, of course, is the math. And in the math, we evaluate things like rote counting, shape naming, number discrimination, number naming, shape discrimination, operations, counting sets, okay? We're lucky if they could do one plus one. They should, they should by the end of the year. But addition, subtraction, all that comes later in other grade levels. For pre-K, this is what we're looking at. And again, if you look at the progress measures, the goals that the, that the board set along with the department, in 2020, we were looking at 79%. 2021, 81% of the students passing, how, or being on target, rather. However, again, we don't have that data, because they didn't test. For this year, we're looking at 83%. For 2023, we're looking at 85%. And 2024, 87%. The students, I don't know why they do, they tend to do a lot better in math than in the reading component. It's the language buildup. I guess in language, they're all building up. They're speaking as well as they're listening and they're reading. So in math, I guess they like numbers. Thank you.
For progress measure number two and three, we will be progress monitoring students in kinder through second grade as an effort to support the increase in our board outcome goal for third grade. The progress monitoring assessment that we're gonna be using, starting this year, is gonna be NWA MAP Growth to evaluate our math progress measures. NWA MAP is a normative assessment that is gonna evaluate student performance and growth. The components that are being evaluated in this particular assessment are gonna be numerical representation and relationships, computation and algebraic reasoning, geometry and measurement, data analysis and money. These four components directly align to our state assessments, our STAR assessments. For progress measure number two, we approved, or it was approved, that the percentage of kindergarten students that meets grade level or above in imagined math would increase from an 82% to an 87% by June 2024. Our first goal set in the year 2020 was an 83%, and we did meet this goal. Transitioning into the year 2021, again, this would be post-pandemic, coming back to virtual and also remote instruction. Our goal was set at 84%, and we ended at a 77%. Now, this data does look, while we did not meet our goal, the losses weren't as significant. And this is promising data as we transition into these students moving on to upper grades and meeting the goals in the future. Next slide. For progress number, measure number three, the percentage of first through second grade students that score meets grade level or above in imagined math will increase from a 67% to 77% by June 2024. Again, in the year 2020, we set the goal to 69%, and we did meet this goal, in spite of the pandemic. Transitioning into the 2021 school year, last academic year, our goal was set at 71% and we ended at a 69%. Again, did not meet our goal, but we were significantly close. And again, this is very promising data as we move forward with all the growth that is already reflected in the effects of in-person instruction this academic year. Dr. Sidwood will continue with this presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Valdez, Coach Cuellar, and members of the board. For the next, for the last three slides, I'll be presenting on college career and military readiness, or what we're calling CCMR. CCMR is a very important component of this state's accountability. It plays a very important role in all the three domains of accountability, especially on the student achievement. Our students actually achieve readiness through the following CCMR indicators. And I'm not gonna go through them one by one, but if you have any questions later, you can ask at the very end. And please note that the military readiness indicator is temporarily suspended for statewide. And as I go into the next slide, also, I wanted to remind everyone that the CCMR data is always lagging by one year. Next slide, please. Okay, so this CCMR board, board goals and plans have been predetermined prior to the pandemic. So for the accountability year 2020, the goal was to achieve 77%. As a district, we earned, we have about 75% of our high school graduates met CCMR indicators. So we're still above the state, which is at 72.9, which is about 73%, and we were at 75%. And that was prior to the pandemic. For the accountability 2021, and these are the students who graduated in 2020. And that's when the students were actually out for about three months, March, April, and May, because that's when the, the beginning of the pandemic. But as, as, our goal was to hit 79% as a district. As, I mean, yeah, as a district, and then the percentage of high, percentage of high school graduates who met CCMR, we were at 77%, and we were above the state level and also the region. For accountability year 2022, these are our students who graduated in 2021. That was last year, and that was the year when our students were in, were in remote learning the whole year. It is predicted that we're going to be at 52%. So there's a big difference there. So next slide, please. For, currently, where are we at? So the, the goal is to hit 83% for our, for 20 accountability year 2023. And that would be our current seniors. The data that you're looking at is the cohort 2022 and cohort 2023. So for our cohort 2022, this is the current data that we have. We have about 57% of our seniors who are already CCMR complete. We have, for the CCMR potential, we are at 32.33%. That means a lot of our, a lot of our students are probably sitting in a class, a college prep class, because they can earn a CCMR indicator through that. Some of our kids are enrolled in Texas College Bridge. They are going to, we have students who are sitting in floral design class and also a marketing class and, forgetting, BIM classes. And actually, as, this week, they were testing on those industry-based certifications, because we can get also CCMR credit for those. And actually, as, uh, this week, they were testing on those, uh, industry-based certifications, because we can get also CCMR, uh, credit for those. Those tests, assessments. Um, so if, and then we have about CC, a ten, ten point seven percent students who are still CCMR incomplete. We are, um, closely monitoring those students. So since, since this data is by cohort, we do have a few students who are not on grade level yet. But we're hoping that as soon as the semester is over and we reclassify them. That they have enough credits, um, to be classified as a senior. And, uh, we'll be working closely with them to, um, so they can, they can earn their CCMR indicators. Uh, for our juniors, we do have data here as well. For our juniors, uh, for CCMR complete, we're at twenty-nine percent. Um, we do have this year and next year to work with them as well. So that's the end of our presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
I have several questions. I guess I'll start with, uh, the early, uh, childhood. Let me go back here. You, I, I was going to ask how we monitor, uh, growth and what assessment, but you guys said the circle progress and. Uh, but my question I is because I've had a couple of. Kinder or even, uh, other grade level teachers. Send me pictures of kids crying because they were taking, uh, the writing benchmarks. And for example, and I just took a picture of the, the writing prompt for a kindergarten. Uh, student, because I'm thinking, okay, if we're progress monitoring with circle. Progress, but then we're still having our six weeks benchmarks. For example, a kindergartner is asked, how does throwing away paper hurt the earth? Use text evidence from the article to support your answer. For a kindergartner who can barely, you know, they're barely learning.
I understand, I understand.
So there's frustration there. We have a lot of quantitative data, as I told Dr. Valdez and the team yesterday, we're talking about this. We have a lot of quantitative data and they're, they're growing. That's awesome. But the qualitative data, the, the, the kids are frustrated, the teachers are burned out. You know, we expect a kindergartner to answer, how does throwing away paper hurt the earth? Use text evidence from the article. Why are we doing six weeks benchmarks still? I, I know why we're doing them, but are we overloading them with so many assessments?
I will refer that question to Arcadia because she does work in particular with the literacy component. Uh, and Arcadia, do you want to explain or do you want me to address it?
Yes. No, I, I, uh, thank you, uh, Mrs. Saita for, for your question. It's, and it's a very valid question. Um, so as you know, recently with HB three nine zero six, we have a whole new star redesign. Which has launched new genres at all, at all grade levels. So we are looking now, instead of three genres being assessed for our third graders, now they will be assessed in six genres. Whereas before it was only reading and one genre for writing. Now, the state will be assessing our students in all genres for writing and six genres for reading. So we want to be able to support our third grade teachers. In the incoming students that are, you know, receiving the instructional standards that are being. Directed by our state standards, which is our TEES. So all of those standards that, that are being addressed in kinder through the writing prompts are part of our state standards. So students in kinder are required to show text evidence. While the prompt does ask for that, it does stipulate that the child can answer verbally. Until he is ready to either draw it or write it. So, and it, it is with teacher's support. That is stipulated in the prompt.
Well, I, if we're a kinder teacher to ask each student verbally one by one, I mean, that's for an assessment would be very difficult. But I, I think we just need to really research into does, does giving these, uh, this information as kinder really. Impact their learning to be, uh, more. Are they going to be more knowledgeable in third grade because we threw it at them at kinder, in kinder, or, you know, have we researched into that to see if. It really does, is it effective to do that or?
You know, I think that if the state hadn't or is not, is requiring this, it's because they have researched it. And I think the questions are geared more for the thinking process. They need to start, uh, their critical thinking skills because it is asked of them so much earlier on the test, like in third grade. Uh, I think those questions, again, are more of the critical thinking nature and if they're able to verbalize it. Uh, I don't know, Arcadia, how it's set up in the classroom for the teachers.
I, I was gonna, uh, to, to, uh, answer your question, Mrs. Saita, the, the prompt, there's a window that's given. So they don't have to complete the assessment in one week or two. They have up to two, the last two weeks of the six weeks to administer these. So. Um, a kinder teacher normally has anywhere from, let's say fifteen to twenty-two kids. So she has up to two weeks to complete these. So it's, it's not something that's given in one day. I, I don't know if that, that helps you, um, answer the question.
I thought benchmarks were given in one day to everybody, just here it is.
No, no, not the writing, not the writing, um.
Now, does it have to be an assessment or can it be just some monitoring, observation, growth of this is what my kids are doing? Because.
I think what you're asking is, does it have to be called a test? Could we call it something else?
It's data.
Actually, it's, it's a, it's a six weeks, it's a writing constructed response. And what they do with these, Mrs. Saita, is, uh, we are collecting writing portfolios. So. We are asking for one writing piece, um, from every teacher to put into these writing portfolios. This writing portfolio is meant to follow the student to first grade. And now the teacher has a better understanding of what the writing abilities of that child is. Where they can pick up from where they left off in kinder. Um, so we are asking for one writing piece per six weeks.
Okay. Just wanted to add a few points. A good question. Thank you for asking. If we're looking at the data analysis preliminary results, when we're looking at the decline, uh, that we receive throughout the state, you're looking at math having the steepest decline. Where they drop from there. Then from there, you're going to go into the science, then you go into the writing, social studies and reading. That's where you see the decline in the certain content areas. Uh, again, we can word, going back to the standards that, that TA. Has in place for the students at every grade level. We can go back and see how we, we can word it or how we're going to work with our teachers. But we do have those measures that we have to have in place as best as we can for that exposure.
And when we started, Mr. Gilat, you mentioned how we don't want to move those goals. We don't want to regress. We want to keep them. But of course we have to show growth, correct? So with this pandemic that we just went through. Um, obviously, we're not at the, the, the percentage that we wanted to be at that. So are we going to, because it's supposed to be board adopted, right? I don't ever, I never adopted it. We're just like, yeah, we can do it. But are we ever going to look back and say, okay, you know what, maybe we were thinking a little bit too much here or, or. The growth is showing, what can we do to not be so off?
Okay, so going back to these HB three, as Dr. Valdez mentioned, these were pre-COVID. So when those goals were adopted and we were, they were being discussed, we were looking at our trajectory, where we were headed. So that's where the ambitious goals were set. Now with the disruptions, you know, with COVID nineteen that we're still going through, coming back, do we say, are we going to decrease the goal? Or are we going to continue with our efforts and try to see what we can attain? But it's been very difficult because we don't have full measures, progress measures with assessments to make that determination. This year will give us that data to say, the data will drive those decisions to say. Let's go back to the board, these are going to be some adjustments. Because we're seeing that this is where we're still having a hard time attaining those goals moving forward. The data is also showing that as math has shown the steepest decline. Economically disadvantaged students have the greatest decline in reading and math as well. That's where we're struggling. Remote learning has also attributed to the learning decline. And that's the research that we have coming out from TA, you know, in all settings. So. Again, we can go back and we can look at all those standards and come back as a committee and, and get everyone involved and vet that out and see what's going to be best.
I think after the pandemic, it's going to be important to look at those numbers and, and adjust to what we have to.
Correct.
Yes, and, and I think the other point that Arcadia made, uh, Ms. Longoria made was that not only do we have to climb this. These steep goals that we have to attain or our students have to attain. But the state came in and added steeper goals to the mix with adding all the genres for these kids to learn. Um, and will be assessed on them this year in third grade. And the, our third graders didn't learn these genres last year and the year before. So, and, you know, well, due to the pandemic. So, yeah, it's a steep hill decline.
So going back to that redesign, star redesign, I know Mr. Trevino is really going to go, uh, full speed ahead coming in January with all the breakdown on that. Uh, but the implementation for that is twenty-two, twenty-three, correct, Mr. Trevino? Uh, for the star redesign that we're going to look at. And it's going to be a transformational form of assessment on what we're looking. Right now, the, you know, our communication with our, our campus administrators and staff is. We're moving full speed ahead because that's the way the state's holding us accountable at the end of the year. We're still going to have that measure on what we're doing. And we've been having several of those discussions with a lot of data points as we speak. They're still receiving them today. Having those discussions with our administrators, our campuses and what they're doing, we're following up. Everything that they have in place, following up to monitor that progress. And we're going to try to, you know, attain that as best as possible i- in the midst of the, the COVID pandemic.
Now, I know it says here that the, the, the school board should be monitoring campuses that need help, uh, you know, that, that are performing. What can we do as a board, this is what I was asking, to help? I know we have, like I said, the quantitative data, but what about the qualitative data? Have we asked the teachers? Yes, there's professional development. You're going to go to train. What can we do to help those campuses or those teachers that we aren't doing? Do we give them more assistance, accelerated learning?
It's funneling the, the resources.
What do we need to do?
Whether it's financial resources, human resources into our high priority campuses. That's how, that's what the Board of Trustees could, could, um, do.
Could recommend to the, to superintendent.
Okay.
But we'll provide more progress measures now that we have MAP as well. We can bring then their, the winter. Um, assessment results that are going to be tested in, in January and the board, we want to bring forth more outcomes, student outcome, learning outcome data to you. And part of the superintendent's report, that way we're progress monitoring throughout the year.
Okay.
Yeah, the progress monitoring is including everything from pre, pre-K, looking at the reading levels, math levels, everything that we're moving up. At every, uh, as, as the reports are coming, our benchmarks, they're finalizing. We've already sent out some results, some are going to be finalized tomorrow. We're getting those, we're dissecting, they're going to have their PLC days on Monday, they're regrouping, they're looking at that. We're taking advantage of our RSSP through TA. We also have T-Class that we, we were just awarded. We're trying to look at several options that we have to provide those resources. But we do, we work with our campuses, we vet out a lot of the resources that we have, a lot of them through the PLCs. Try to have those discussions and try to get the best feedback possible to have a collective effort with that.
And we do have to, what Mrs. Saita was saying, the mixed methods approach to attaining data, right? We, we do focus on the quantitative, but we do need the qualitative.
Right.
And, and we can seek that, that feedback, get that, um, data from, whether it's through the PLCs, whether it's through principals, whether it's through the CNI team. And bringing it back so that way we have a, we have the whole story.
Right, like if you, you ask me, what do you need to help your kids? And I had plenty of these meetings with Mr. Gilat when I was teaching with our kids and our six weeks meetings, what do, what do we need to do different as a teacher? I know I would say, I need more manpower. I'll take care of these kids. If somebody can come in once a week and help me tutor my kids. Manpower? Okay, so many teachers might say, I need a different program.
Correct.
There's so many, you, the qualitative data, what do you need to help for, so we can help you?
Right, which would be instructional resources, human resources, fiscal, whatever, uh, uh, financial, sorry, what, you know, to help.
Yes, definitely.
And you channel those.
Yeah, good points. And those sessions are happening with our principals, administrators, they're working with their teachers to provide additional supports. I know we're just getting out a lot of additional mentors to get them onto the campuses that, those are going out.
The star mentors.
As we speak, star mentors to get some support out there. So, uh, but we'll continue doing that. We'll continue looking at other options. Uh, and look at that, look at that mixed method approach to get that qualitative, uh, input as well. Absolutely, we can do that.
Thank you very much.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think, I think for, for, for myself, it's something to keep in mind is that this is not a sprint. I know we, we're trying to, you know, this accelerated learning term that was thrown out there and, hey, this, we gotta, this is not a sprint. And I think when we get to the final, at the end of the year and next year, we're looking at our data and so forth. I think that data is going to be, is, is going to be wishy-washy or, or mixed because we are truly overloading the kids. We're, we're, we're not, you know, what happened to old school teaching? We're all up here based off of old school teaching. None of that exists anymore. Everything's JSI programs. There's a program for everything now. Back then, there was no programs. It was. Hey, one times one, I mean, it was, it, it was a lot of interacting, a lot of, there isn't none of that right now. And I think our kids, based off of that gap, uh, uh, due to that COVID, um, thing that we did, that we had, that we incurred, the gap. I think that's what they're missing, not throw more programs at them. So I, you know, I would like for us to see, you know, I know more resources, to me, more resources means, means more work. We, we need to look at, you know, is it going to be the end of the world if, if our, all we want to see is progress? We don't want to, you know, these, all this data that was presented, the projected data twenty-four. I think we better worry about the now, right now about our kids. Because by twenty twenty-four, we may not be in the same position where, I mean, we could be worse. So we, we need to focus on the now, not be so caught up with, oh, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, the data. And I know what we're up against. I'm not naive to that. I know what we're up against, what the state's mandating, what they want to see. But I don't think the state even knows. They're still running the, trying to run the, the state education from their houses. So are they facing the reality that, that have they visited schools? Are they out and about? I don't think so if they're running the school from their houses. So here we are as teachers, as administrators, as staff. I just, I do not want to see us overloading our teachers, overloading our kids. I mean, we got fights breaking out every day. We got this, we got that, we, we got things occurring every single day. There's no data on that because we're not tracking that stuff. So I, I think we, we really need to take a step back. All these programs available are great, whatever, but are we really addressing the student, the kindergartner? I remember kindergarten and it was fun. What, what are we doing for lessons to decompress the students, the teachers? On a weekly basis, once a week, what, is it all going to be? Are we just going to drive them, drive them, drive them, test on Friday? Drive them, drive them, drive them, test them, I mean, eat, that, I mean, what, I, I think we're, we really need to look at that right now because. There's no decompressor for our students or our staff. That's why they're all retiring or leaving the, the career, the, the teaching, uh. Um, careers, because there is no decom, they need to decompress and, and I think that's our responsibility as a board. And as you guys instructional leaders, to find ways to do that through speakers, through, through finding. I mean, I, I don't think there's any, I, I mean, I, I don't know what's, what else is out there. That's not my, my cup of tea right now, but there has to be. Additional lessons out there that are going to help decompress activities, fight, interacting. Right now, it's, oh, COVID, we can't touch it, we can't get this close. There is no interacting going on. And I think that's what we really need to look at as a, as, as, uh, as a board and as a district. Are the scores going to make a diff, we know what kind of teachers we have. We've seen the data from two thousand, from prior to COVID. We know we have great instructional, everything's in place. What we can't do is overload them and shoot, we'll have less teachers, uh, coming in. What's going to happen in semester? Next year, we'll have even less because there's, I mean, there's a lot of other jobs out there that don't bring this overload, so.
Yeah, um, and, and that's a valid point, Coach, and, and. You know, it was September twenty nineteen when the Commissioner of Education put forth the correspondence. Um, entitled, um, House Bill Three and Board Adopted Goals. And it was September twenty nineteen. When we, Board of Trustees and districts had to implement and adopt goals. And so the reason it goes to twenty twenty-four and so forth is because you have to be visionary, right? And you have a goal, you have a target. As we do in athletics, as we do in fine arts, whether it's band and we want to get a division one rating and go on to area and make it to state. Um, tho- those are goals that, that, that we set forth. And in academics, our state championships are in. Getting that A rating in accountability. But it all comes from the Texas Education Agency and from the Texas Legislature. They're the ones that set forth these targets and put forth and set forth. They're the ones that set forth these targets and put forth and set forth an A-through-F accountability system. And so, we have to do our due diligence to make sure that our boys and girls are college and career-ready, right? And it starts in kinder. And if one could study the TEACs, the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills, and the ambitious, um, and, and, and an aggressive move by the state of Texas from when we were in kinder to what a kinder student has to learn today is very different. I mean, it is, we would be amazed, uh, we ha- I think that one, we would, we'd have to have a workshop to, to introduce our community and, and inform our parents and everyone, all our stakeholders, what our kindergarteners have to learn today as opposed to, you know, so long ago. And, and, uh, a- and yes, it, it does put pressure, as it does for a football coach to win a district title or a state championship. It's that pressure. So, every educator has those kinds of pressures that we put on ourselves because we wanna be the best. We want Wesco to be the best. We want Wesco to be that A-plus district where everyone wants to be and where all, we want all our boys and girls to, to, for their dreams and aspirations to come to fruition, to fruition. Um, that's what it's about, right? It's not about test scores. But at the same time, when I say resources, I mean like human resources. Do we have to, does a principal want to request at a high priority school? I don't mean instruction, put on in the program, send them in the program. I mean, does that individual need assistance as far as a star mentor? So we can do small group instruction, which is research-based, that produces the greatest outcomes in increasing student learning. Um, is it ch- channeling monies for extra camps? Um, e- extra, uh, instructional materials that the teacher wants? I- it's being really prescriptive with resources. So it can be a- any of that. Um, I wish that I could stand here or sit here as a leader and say, man, you know, we don't, and the last thing we wanna do is overload people. I think it's just that as educators, we ourselves, right, um, carry that weight and, and, and have that noble profession of shaping a child's mind and, 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 and educating them. And that's the life's work that we do. And, and so, it, it's, it is tense. It is filled with pressure, um, even to get a child to become literate. It's a magical moment that I've seen when a kindergartner enters Wesco ISD illiterate and becomes literate. And there's a lot of pressure on our teachers. It doesn't matter if it's during COVID or not. That's just how we are. And if we're, are, we see our children, and, and, and now, now I think the pressure comes from, we're in the midst of a public health pandemic that no educator in the history of our country, whether we're a teacher, whether we're a principal, or whether we're an interim superintendent of schools, that no one has ever done before in this country, in the world, run a school system, teach in a classroom in the midst of a public, global public health pandemic. It's never been done before. And there's no guidance on that. And so, we're doing the best that we can each and every day so we can meet the needs of our boys and girls. I wish there was something that could be done, but, you know, I promise you that we don't wanna put ex- extra pressure, ex- overload our children. That's the last thing we wanna do, and especially our teachers. Because without great teachers, nothing else matters to us. Second to that will be our campus principals and campus leaders. But we're gonna do the best that we can, and those are valid concerns. But I just wish that there was a, a playbook. And that, and that we all had the Xs and Os on how to navigate through a global public health pandemic in an educa- educational system in the twenty-first century.
Very well stated, Dr. Valdez, and thank you for sharing the valid concerns that, that are being shared. And we do discuss them. We do have those discussions with our campus administrators and so forth. And we do recognize the stress that is out there. It's more, it's much more amplified, and we know that we're dealing with that. Uh, we've dealt with the tremendous pressures pre-COVID. We continue to dr- uh, deal with them now, and we still work through it. And we're gonna continue working through it. Uh, we do have those discussions to make sure that the substance of the discussions are taking place through a lot of those walkthroughs on the campuses. And that takes place with the campus administrators. We do discuss the level of questioning that's taking place, a lot of those discussions. Instead of just saying, we're pushing this program because, uh, on the contrary, we're trying to reduce that. If we don't have usage with certain resources or programs or online materials, we're, we wanna cut those. We wanna move forward. We don't wanna keep giving, but we wanna find, we wanna provide enough tools where teachers can be eclectic and pick on what's gonna work for them and their students. They have that toolbox. They pick and choose and how they're gonna get from point A to point B, and they're gonna move forward with that. And that's the thing that is very difficult. And we were having those discussions today because there's so much that wants, they want to present and prepare with PD, but they also have to hold back to allow teachers to teach. So that's a constant struggle that we deal with. And we try to find that balance as best as we can instead of working in islands. And we have those discussions. So those discussions do take place. Uh, we, uh, we have them every time. We have them on a daily basis. And we look at everything very carefully, but we have that responsibility to do what's best for our students and to teach the law and the required curriculum. And that's what we're doing right now, as best as we can.
And, and, go ahead.
It, you know, yesterday, and, and you brought up a point right now, Mr. Mr. Yal. You know, yesterday, he- he- here's my, my concern, and it was brought up yesterday. We have one teacher giving out fifteen assignments for one night or whatever because they see their kids every other day. And we have one teacher given three assignments. So, what, what's gonna be the balance there? There, there ha- I mean, I know we, the, the magical words, oh, well, I told them, well, we told them, well, we continue to tell people. But that's a, a big significant di- difference. And I know Dr. said, it, it, just like, um, yeah, I, I know we're preparing kindergartners. I've, I got five kids, and I got one at West Point, and he's the one I hated at school the most, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, I think at third grade, finally snapped out of him, and he, it, so there's, there, it's okay for them. Now, I just wanna make sure we, we don't push our kids into a, a negative corner. Because right now, they're already dealing with this social econo- social, uh, emotional state that, you know, once we do that, it's gonna be hard to bring them back over to this side.
Correct.
So, that, that's about my only concern.
Right, Coach. And, and that was a valid point that was brought up last night during our board, um, training, that there's an inconsistency. And this is more at the secondary level where you have the same, uh, content, same teacher and the content, same content area, same level, whether it's a pre-AP, um, and I believe it was a pre-AP section. And you have one teacher who assigns a s- X number of assignments as opposed to another teacher that, you know, the, the quantity of assignments was quite excessive. So it's something, Coach, yes, that we'll, we're gonna have to closely monitor that, get with the campus principals, get with the specific departments, and make sure that there's, there's, it's pretty equitable or equal in that manner. It would be equal if it's a pre-AP course.
Absolutely.
That it's, that, that's, that's significantly, uh, different.
A very valid point.
And, and not that we're not trying to challenge, believe me.
Right.
I'm, I'm, I'm the number one competitor. There, there's not, not, not that we're trying to pull back, just quality, quality. I mean, there's, there's a lot of ways to skin a cat, and just, that, that's, uh, extreme, I think, uh, some examples.
Correct. I, I really love to see that qualitate, that qualitative data, the feedback, whether it's surveys, questionnaires, interviews, because I know that you say, yes, we have those conversations, but just like we see it in front of our face, these numbers, I wanna see it. I wanna see what they have to say. I wanna see, you know, one thing I've learned is, you're gonna say something or do you have your evidence to back it up? Okay, well, I have, you have, we have the numbers of the, the mastery of the, the math, reading, but the attitudes and the burnout and the perceptions, we don't have any of that. That was, that will help us guide us, that will help guide us into everything else that we need to do. So I, we, we can really work on that qualitative data and get that feedback, but not just saying it, well, they told me this. No, show me. I wanna see it.
Right, we can document anytime that we're interviewing, not, I mean, they're, they're informal, right? Any informal conversations we're having, we can document. That way, we memorialize, and that's the data that we can bring forth to share with y'all. Thank you so much for your feedback.
And we'll get with our campus principals and administrators, and we'll get something in place.
Okay.
And, and, you know, we'll all have, have a input in it, and then we'll get something out on there. So, very valid points again. Thank you for sharing.
And also, we could add some surveys. We could add some surveys, you know, also to provide some feedback. That would give us, uh, more data, qualitative data.
Right.
And, and thank you for bringing that up. Uh, we've got, we, you know, we welcome that feedback, you know, anything, anytime we're looking at something that may raise a red flag, such as, uh, you know, pre-AP and what we're, we just need to look into. We'll, we'll sit down with the principals.
Yeah, appreciate your feedback. That way, it makes us better.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We now will go to item nine, consent agenda. I'll have you all look at the, um, are there the items? And then ask you if there's anything that you'd like to pull. Okay? Mr. Nieto?
Uh, none.
Mrs. Sestaita?
None.
Coach Trevino?
N.
N?
Yes, N is a neutral.
Mr. Los Santos?
None, sir.
And I have none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of N?
Motion to approve the consent agenda with exception, with the exception of the N.
We have a motion by Mr. Los Santos to approve the consent agenda with the exception of N.
Second.
A second by Mr. Nieto. A second to a vote. Signify your approval by saying I want to call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Sestaita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Now, for item N, Coach Trevino.
Yes, sir. Mr. Fernandez?
Yes, and Mr. President, I was going to share with the trustees that we're gonna pull item N because it's now going to be funded through, well, but we can still entertain the question.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Yes, or discussion.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Good evening, Dr. Valdez, Mr. Cooyar, esteemed members of the board.
Yes.
I'm here and available to answer any questions regarding item N.
Mr. Fernandez, the, the, and believe me, I support fine arts, or, uh, that's not the, the question here, but I did, something that stood out to me was, uh, having three campuses, Wesaco High, Beegarsa Central Middle School. And I know we have the other side, which is East, Mary Hope, Wayat. My, my question, so that, obviously, that stood out to me. And my, my first question is, do we or have you been provided with, or do you have a list of a, an inventory and an age of instruments at each specific campus?
Yes, actually, that's a great question to ask. We have our head band director here, uh, Mr. Leal. Uh, he is the head band director for Wesaco High School.
Okay.
And I think he will be able to answer that from Wesaco's perspective. Uh, in terms of East's perspective, yes, I do have a spreadsheet of that with all of the, um, current instruments, as well as the needs assessment for each one, the condition it's in, and the history that's attached to that instrument, and, uh, the assignment that it currently has in terms of the student that's using it.
Okay.
Uh, and the reason why we're coupling all of our different campuses together, one, those are the feeder patterns, and two, the way, um, our faculty is dispersed throughout the day, these, uh, team of directors go to each one of these campuses and, um, they, they teach. This is, this is part of their teaching structure, uh, every single day. So when East has submitted their request, this is a timely manner. That's why you're only seeing High represented. However, East is on the table, and those, um, funds have been proposed as well. We just paused because of Mr. Garlic's proposal earlier, um, to see where we stood. So that is in the making. It's already been prepared. But in terms of your question, yes.
Inventory there is.
We have that, sir. Readily available to be shared.
That's excellent.
Now, in terms of High, I'm gonna pass it over to Mr. Leal.
Yes, uh, thank you very much. Yes, exactly the same as Mr. Fernandez was saying, we do have the same inventory for all three campuses on our side, Wesaco High, Beegarsa and Central, along with the, uh, the condition of each instrument, the amount of instruments per campus, and the amount of, uh, overall the instruments that are needed pertaining to the amount of students that we have to those sections as well.
Okay, no, it, it was just, I want, you know, I wanna make sure there's equality here.
Oh, definitely.
We're, we're doing for, for, we're doing it for the entire, uh, district. So that's the only thing that, that stood out here. We only had one. And I'm glad to see there's an inventory that we, we keep track of, of all our instruments, and we get the full use out of these instruments. And to make sure that we're not passing them over or handing them down to, to anybody, you know, because I, I, I have heard in the past that, that used to happen, and I wanna make sure that is not.
Not anymore, not that, no.
We're very prudent with, with how we go about, uh, our inventory and making sure that our resources are kept within Wesaco ISD. And, and, and serving one purpose only, and that's to better our department through our students.
Okay, excellent.
And Mr. Fernandez, the timeline for Wesco East's, um, proposal to come forward will, what, you like?
It's already been submitted.
Oh, okay.
Again, it's just on hold because we didn't know what direction to move forward based off of the proposal. So it's already been submitted. And that number, that figure that, uh, Mr. Garlic gave you earlier, that encompasses that side, uh, of town, as well as the feeder schools that feed into East as well.
Okay, thanks.
That projection was more or less taken into consideration, Mr. Leal's proposal, as well as East as well.
All right, thank you. Mr. Leal, I had a question, because when I was reading this, this, it says, we do not know what items or quantities will be purchased throughout the year nor from what vendor. So we don't know yet what we're going to purchase, it's just as we need it, or?
We, we have the actual, uh, amount of instruments, uh, and it should be attached.
It is there, yes.
The, the exact amount of instruments and what kind of instruments that we need at, at all three campuses. So, uh, as far as the price is concerned, you know, the, the quotes are attached, and we are going with the lowest, the lowest bid as well.
Okay.
So we do have an exact amount and a specific instrument pertaining to what we need. And really, what we need are the larger instruments because those are the ones that are
Okay.
our parents and, you know, the community, it's just, they're too expensive.
Something about that, Mr. Leal, I, I, I understand, you know, the low bid process, but I also understand that sometimes when you specify a certain instrument, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be the least expensive.
Yes.
So we don't wanna compromise quality. It's gonna give us better results in the, in the end, to, uh, to try to save a little bit of money.
No, and, and the instruments that I did go out for bid for, those are all quality instruments.
Good.
Uh, those are all the, the, the basic Yamaha, the Bach, the, the, those are the, the instruments that are, are gonna be, give us the longevity that we need. Now, are they the professional kind? No, they're not. No. Are they the, the intermediate that what we need? Yes, they are all intermediate brands. I do not, I did not wanna go for the top-of-the-line Corvette because that's not what we need.
Yes.
You know, I went with just the bare minimum. This is what's gonna get us through for the next ten, fifteen years. So, uh, the instruments are specifically just what we need, all the larger stuff that really the district usually provides, you know, the tubas, the bigger instruments, the more expensive ones that our students, uh, and our community can't afford.
Okay, yes, as long as we're doing what, what, uh, but we're not gonna have to second guess when we're going against other, uh, students and competing and, and not feel like we're at the same
Right, right.
Level.
No, definitely.
We want our kids to get
It, it's gonna get us through what we definitely need for the next ten, fifteen years.
That's, that's what we wanna hear.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Coach Trevino?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by, uh, Ms. Sestaita to approve item N, and a second by Mr. Coach Trevino?
Yes.
Let's take it to a vote.
We're gonna table that, or, because it was gonna go through Estor funds, or we are gonna?
Oh, you know.
Different funding source.
We're good. We're good.
Are we good?
We don't need to approve this item because it's part of Estor, so I'll rescind my motion.
You rescind your, your, your motion and then?
Oh, because we're gonna pull it. Yes, we're pulling after all because of the, it's going.
So
It'll come back to the board, I guess, in the next board meeting, correct?
Okay, do, are, are we going to vote on it? We're going to vote to
Re-classifying.
Right.
To table this item?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Saito to table item N, and a second by Coach Trevino. And we'll take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying I want to call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Ms. Saito?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. That takes us to item 10, discussion items. A, first reading of policy update 118 from the Texas Association of School Boards, Tasby, Dr. Valdez.
Mr. President, no action is required for the policy update 118 from Texas Association of School Boards. We do have Dr. Sergio Garcia available, should you have any questions.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. By? By Mr. Los Santos?
Second.
And a second by Mrs. Saito. Do we have any?
No, no action is required in this one.
No action required, okay.
Right, it's just the first reading.
We're not going to vote on this thing, so.
Correct.
That's right.
These are just discussions.
This is just discussion.
Yes.
You threw me there, bro. Good job. It's, it's a discussion item. So is there anything that
I read it there.
No.
Dr. Garcia, that, that we, we need to provide, other than that we did see what a lot of the information was, so.
Right.
It was kind of.
Correct. And, 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 and I want to start by saying that I apologize. It is a huge document. If you look at the legal policies, it's like nine hundred pages. Fortunately, we only have eleven, was it eleven local policies that you're going to vote on at the next meeting, the second reading? Policies have been distributed to the individuals that are listed for the departments that are listed on there, as well as to the principals. You know, I told them, if you don't, if you have time during the holidays and you'd like to read something, you can read the policies. But they have been distributed to all our administration here at central office. And, you know, we regularly advise them, make sure that you look at these policies. If there are any changes to the local policies that you would like to recommend, let me know so that I can forward it to Tasby before we present it at the second hearing. So everybody's aware of the policies and, you know, so. That's it. If you have any questions or?
No, but we, we appreciate all the time and effort you guys are putting into this, because I know it's a lot of work.
Yes, thank you. And they, you know, they, they, you know, have been very good about reading the, the policies, particularly the local policies, because they're the ones that you're going to, you know, that's, that's up to us. That's our local policy. So make sure that they're in line with, you know, what, you know, our philosophy and our vision and goals.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
B, interim financial reports for the three months ended November 30, 2021. Dr. Valdez?
Uh, Mr. President, no action is required in this item as well. It's our presentation as far as the interim financial report for the three months ended November 30, 2021, and we do have Mr. Andres Sanchez presenting this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Valdez, the Quayar members of the board. This is the interim financial report of the general fund for the three months ended November 30, 2021. For the revenues, we have an adjusted amended budget of one hundred and seventy-seven million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. We have received through November 30, forty-five million, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight, which represents twenty-five point sixty-eight percent of the amended budget. On the expenditures, the totals for all functions is amended budget, one hundred and eighty million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars, of which we have expended or encumbered through November 30, thirty-eight million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, eighty-one dollars, which represents twenty-one point forty-two percent. Three months of expenditures for the ten-month-year budget, it should be at thirty percent, so twenty-one percent is a good percentage to be at. There's three schedules after the, after the expenditures. Can you skip to the third one? One more? One more. This three pages, this is the last of three pages, is the schedule of adjustment that we have done, amendments, where we took money from fund balance to amend the budget. The total is seven million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. That together with the initial adopted budget for expenditures of one hundred and seventy-two million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, equals a hundred and eighty million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-five, which is the amended budget of expenditures that I mentioned earlier. Just a brief overview. I don't want to go into all the details of the reconciliation, which I've covered before the prior two months. Do you have any questions on that?
I have no questions.
That's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We go to item C.
Okay.
Acknowledgements of Idango County Tax Office Collection Report for November 2021, current taxes and delinquent taxes.
Yes, this is the Idango County Tax, Tax Office Collection Report for November 2021. On the current taxes of the original levy of twenty-six million, two hundred and eleven thousand, we have collected to date, or to November 30, two million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. There have been adjustments to the tax levy of an increase of one point two million. Altogether, represents nine point seventy-five percent of the original levy. The year before, November 30 of 2020, the percentage of collection was eight point sixty-one. That means for the 2021 year, we are at one point fourteen percent higher collections than the prior year. On the delinquent taxes, we started with three million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-two. We have collected through November 30, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. It's a decrease of almost eighty-four thousand dollars of adjustments to the levy. The collections percentage is five point ninety-six percent. The prior year was seven point fifty-five percent. So for the 2021 year, we are at one point fifty-nine percent less collections than the prior year. That is the report submitted by the tax office. Any questions?
Just for clarity.
Yes, sir.
We still have delinquent taxes. We still have three million, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight outstanding. That's what's still.
Yes.
And now for that, for the month of November, we actually collected lower by one percent than, than.
It's, it's actually due to date. As of November 30, 21, we have collected less than as of November 30, 2020.
Twenty twenty.
It's at the three-month percentage. It's most of the time it's like that, or the later on in the year, it catches up. But right now, it's lower than the prior year.
I just, I looked at one of the reports you have provided to us, or was provided to us, and I, and I know, know previously, the other day, or not the other day, but previous meeting, we were presented with, with, you know, ninety-six percent was what Paul, is it Villarreal?
Yeah, Paul Villarreal, yes.
Paul collected, like for instance, here, the twenty-six minute, right now, at collections, right now, we're, we're sitting at nine point seven five, but that's Paul Villarreal.
Yes, that's the current levy.
That's them doing it. So I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, I went back and looked at the, some of the data, and for 2020, we were actually, in collections, we were, we actually collected eight percent less from previous, from the previous year. And I know it was a COVID and this and this and that. So we come back around and, and the following month, we, we, or this year, we collected more. That we, I guess we recovered and, and made the difference up on that eight percent that was and I, we don't have it in front of, in front of us here, but doctor, I would like to request a workshop coming back in January.
Uh huh.
And just so we can better understand this right here, the, the collections.
The prior year collections?
I believe we're, 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 we're not doing very well. We're in second to the last or last place as far as collecting our delinquent taxes right now.
Okay, Coach, we'll do that.
I will, yes. Sometime in January, please.
Okay.
It'll work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valdez.
Thank you.
And now we go to item D. Superintendent's search update by JG Consulting, Dr. Valdez?
Yes, we have Mr. James Geta here with JG Consulting to provide you an update on the superintendent's search.
Board President Quayar, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Valdez, members of the staff, community, thank you for having me this evening. It's been good to get an update and want to thank the staff first and foremost for indulging us, supporting our work by way of all of the stakeholder meetings. So we've had some very productive internal, external meetings, if you will. So the summary report that you have before you this evening is what we'll start with. If it pleases everyone, we can bring it up here visually, or I can just walk you through it. So you should have hard copies, including your packet. We're not going to go through those verbatim. This is a matter of really a protocol for us to disclose to you publicly so that the, the community, the staff are aware, and the transparency and the visibility with respect to the process is honored. So we do this as a best practice. So we'll start with the summary report. I'll go through some highlights, answer any questions you may have, and then we'll quickly transition into the leadership profile if it pleases the board. Okay, so beginning with the summary report, and it's entitled Superintendent's Search Summary Report. I think it's in total, it's roughly eight pages long. The first two pages are just the introductions with the contents. A high-level overview, this is a synthesized version of all the work that my team engaged in with respect to all the various meetings. So we facilitated more than ten community-based meetings, including the staff, students, and general community, both in person and virtually during the first few weeks of our work together. These meetings were conducted the week of December 6th, so I was here in person with Dr. Cavazos. I'm fully aware that also Dr. Cavazos and Dr. Hatton met with each of you individually, so thank you for your time in dedicating your days and hours providing us with input. Some of the communication channels and priorities that we would recommend and continue, continue to recommend, which you're mainly doing as of today and what you have consistently done leading up to this, we'll continue to update, update the district's website with respect to where we are in the major milestones of the superintendent's search. So after tonight, we'll provide and make this document public, and we'll ask your staff to add this PDF to that webpage that we've created, so that way there's visibility with where we are. And we'll also continue to provide updates with the major dates and milestones as we proceed and advance through the executive search process. So all those, those communication channels will continue. It is also the recommendation, unless otherwise directed by the board, that we keep the on, online surveys open. So you have both the English version and in the Spanish version. But we're, we're still continuing to get input and feedback. So rather than turning that switch off, our recommendation would be to keep it open indefinitely until it's the will of the board for us to, to close that. Community members, staff, and students are still providing input through the survey, and we want to invite people to provide input. So we want to hear their voices. So we'll continue with that. As of today, there's approximately, or excuse me, as of yesterday, there were approximately one hundred and twenty-five completed surveys. And we want to give people time through the holiday season, if they haven't had an opportunity to do so, to provide their input. And it is anonymous, so those two surveys protect the anonymity. So if anyone perhaps doesn't feel comfortable sharing publicly, they can do, do so in a safe space online. All right, the following page, page four, is the proposed timeline, which we've, we've discussed early on. Right now, we're at the December 16th date preventing, presenting the summary report, and we will present the leadership profile. If it's the will of the board with your blessing tonight, we will open the application portal tomorrow and begin actively and formally recruiting, vetting, and screening candidates. And that period of time will conclude January the 16th. I propose that we meet in person again to present all of this, the candidates to you in closed session. And I've received some, some feedback from some of you, and I appreciate your, your prompt reply. But if January the 20th works for everyone, we would like to propose that we meet for however many, however many hours it takes in closed session that day. We can start late afternoon, early evening, and dedicate our time to providing you with all of the candidate information. So as a reminder, the information you will receive, each of you will receive an iPad with all of the candidate artifacts uploaded, the letters of interest, the resumes, academic credentials and transcripts, references, verification forms, which is the background check detail. And then one thing I'd also like to introduce to you, which you'll, you'll have more context as you see it visually, if you're like me, y'all like to see things visually. We subscribe to what is known as the Wonderlic Assessment. It's an ability for us to better ascertain their cognitive abilities, their personality, as it aligns to the leadership profile that you'll approve tonight. So it's an additional component that we've included in our process where the candidates will be required to complete this assessment. And it'll give us a rank and file, basically, how well they, their skill set, their experiences, their personality align to the leadership profile. So there's no additional cost for that. We incur the cost as the market space for us continues to expand with competition. I'm a very kind of forward-thinking individual. I wanted to differentiate ourselves. So this is something that's brand new. You will be one of the first school districts in the country to experience this process. So it's something I'm really excited about. So I had an opportunity to use it for my own full-time staff recently. We just hired two new full-time back office employees, and I had them go through the same process. So very proud of that. The other items here that indicate a to-be-determined are the candidate interviews. At the appropriate time, which if it's the will of the board, January the 20th works out, we'll discuss a timeline of when we'd like to host round one of interviews and round two. So theoretically, and we'll just say hypothetically, January the 20th will present, I like to give the candidates a two-week runway to plan for travel. So should you determine to host interviews in person, which I imagine we will, because, you know, we're trending in that direction, we can in the beginning portion of February, interview candidates round one here or somewhere within the, the parameters of Wesaco ISD community. It has to be within the community by law. Ordinarily, we would recommend here, but if there's another venue, a conference room in a hotel room, for example, those details and the wedding plannings, I like to say, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. But my thinking is, and the recommendation of my firm, first week of February or second week, conduct the interviews, both round one and two. And then you name your lone finalist shortly thereafter the final round. The final round of interviews will be the top two candidates that you select from the total talent pool. And then you'll either have a regular board meeting or a scheduled board meeting called to name the lone finalist. And I'm going to go through all this with you as the night that we present the candidates on January the 20th. Just wanted to give you kind of a preliminary roadmap of where we're heading as we, as we advance. So that takes us into late February. So you're naming your lone finalists in February, which is an ideal time. I ran some statistics today. Just in Texas alone, there are fifty superintendent vacancies. And there are four more that I was notified about just this week that are yet to be known for public consumption. Just in, in fact, just Saturday, we interviewed with the San Antonio Independent School District, and they hired us to conduct their superintendent's search. The reason I bring this to your attention is because there's this anxiousness about the opportunity to recruit now during the holiday season. But what I can share with you is that candidates are eager and ready to apply during the holiday season, and it actually puts you at an advantage. Because let's just say we name your, your lone finalist at the end of February, the big first part of March. That gives your incoming superintendent, he or she, an opportunity to transition, work with all of you, the staff, the students, get acclimated to the community, the district. You have the full summer months to further acclimate yourself, the listening and learning tour, and then the next calendar school year, 2022, 23, hit the ground running really hard. You know, I heard someone earlier say it's, it's a marathon or not a sprint. The diligence and, and the opportunity to work with all of you, it's a prime time. So as I like to say, we want to strike while the iron is hot. And also, too, it's conference season is approaching. So our TASZ and Midwinter Conference is being held in Austin, in my hometown, at the end of January, which means I'll have an opportunity, and my team will have an opportunity to meet with Texas-based administrators and superintendents in person. And in fact, we're hosting an event, a recruitment event at the conference. So it'll give us prime time to get in front, in front of folks, not just have phone calls and teleconferences, Zoom meetings, to visit with candidates. I'll pause there. That's the timeline as it stands today. If there are any questions related to the timeline, this is tentative, and nothing is set in stone. We can pencil it in. It's not necessarily written in ink. Seeing none, I guess I'll forge ahead. Page five, excuse me. Again, just to reiterate some of the, the high-level overview themes that we've heard and the voices that we've, we've heard from. We, we all feel, my team feels, that the board has collectively agreed on, on several facets pertaining to the executive search needs. We've identified, it says five, and that's an error. It's actually four objectives. So the four objectives that we've identified, serving the academic So the four objectives that we've identified, serving the academic needs of all students, including expanded learning opportunities, which you currently do, so we put the students at the peak and at the front. Implement processes for human capital and personnel support. We heard a lot about human capital development, professional development. I think in light of some of the changes, we want to honor the request of your personnel and your human capital, who are serving all of the students and the families here. Third, intentional focus to implement a renewed plan to galvanize the district and community. Many of, at least what I've heard in my time here spent with the staff and the community is, we have an opportunity to heal a bit. So I heard a word healer, and that voice was heard loud and clear. And so my intention is to include that third objective as an opportunity for us to galvanize the community, develop a foundation, which you're doing a great job of now. Much of the feedback and the compliments that we received even last week while I was here was that people were very grateful that you gave us the space, you gave my firm, the board, gave us the space to hear from everyone. They acknowledged that it was the first time in the history of doing a search that they haven't had that opportunity, so they felt like they were really a part of the process. And I just again want to thank the staff for all of the due diligence, because really without your staff, they did an amazing job of planning, preparation. I didn't eat any of the pandulce, but that's because I haven't been getting to run as much, but I want to thank them for the offer. And last but not least, the fourth objective, school board and superintendent collaboration. You seem to be a well-oiled machine, just continue that trend. We won't love you and leave you, as I say, after the superintendent is hired, so we're going to work with you to ensure that the success of the district, the rich tradition of your hundred-plus years' history remains intact and you advance forward, which is a good segue to my next statement. So recommendation, the incoming superintendent should commit to a ninety-day entry plan. I referenced listening and learning. When he or she begins service as your next superintendent, much of the time will be spent out in the community, working with you, collaborating with the families, reinvigorating some of those healing areas that may have been lost. It's not lost to us. COVID pandemic has put a lot of pressure on superintendents, a lot of stress on all of you. It's become very much so a thankless job, which is why I think there are so many vacancies in Texas and not just here, but nationwide. Fifty vacancies is a lot. I mean, that's well above average at this time of the year. So the goals, again, in continuance of what we just shared, they're very much correlated to everything I stated, so I won't belabor that point. So the way we identified, and now I'm on page six, it's a comprehensive input overview. We look at three specific categories, but all-encompassing. The first being the trustees, the second being the staff, and then the community is really that all-inclusive piece, because we also heard from students. There was strong student representation when we were at the PLC, and students were quite amazing. I have to give you a ton of credit. I shared with everyone that as I was listening to them, I was thinking selfishly, who can I hire as my next intern? So want to give a shout out to not only you, but the parents of those students who participated. So I'm just going to go through and tease out a couple of the bullets, starting left to right with the trustees. A visionary leader who can effectively communicate and adapt to change brought forth by policy. Someone with proven success in districts and communities comparable to WISD. A superintendent who is highly visible throughout the district campuses, community, and at events. And if you go left to right, you'll see other comments that align with that. You know, you see from staff, the second bullet, leader who can unite the staff and community towards a common vision. Leader who can improve staff morale. You know, I mentioned healer earlier, so in simplistic terms, it's the best way, I think we can paraphrase that. A trustworthy, yet courageous and transformational leader with integrity and transparency. Prefers to work with someone who loves the Westlaco family. You know, I talked about tradition. We heard a lot about the Westlaco family. It takes a village to raise a child, and Westlaco, I think embodies that ideal and that norm. And if you look at community, you'll see a lot of the common themes. A superintendent that listens to all parents. A leader that prioritizes all academic programs. An advocate for all students. Someone who is an active listener, effective communicator, and uses information to address the district's concerns, both in Spanish and in English, preferably. A visible leader who is part of the community, has a genuine interest in the whole district. And then page seven, which is really also going to be included in the leadership profile, this is the first page of our application packet, a technical application packet. We start with the overview of the mission and, excuse me, district priorities, but essentially, this is the North Star, as I like to say. This is a synthesized version of all of the voices that we've heard from using their words. So without going into too much deliberate detail and trying to capture all of that, our team, my firm, put together these bullets as a preface to the application, and these are the high-level themes. We will use the leadership profile as our rubric when you're evaluating the candidates with us, when we present the candidates. In addition to the on-demand interviews, those online videos, you'll have access to that. And now that third component, which is the Wonderlic Assessment. So you're going to have an opportunity to really understand what the candidates are offering by way of serving Westlaco ISD and their candidacy. So no stone will go unturned, but just want to preface by saying that those bullets, that's the North Star. That's what you'll hear me say repeatedly, that's going to be our guide, our rubric, excuse me. Advertising plan, once we have your blessing, receive your blessing tonight, to post the application tomorrow and open it, you're going to see all these different advertisements that we utilize. And of course, we don't rely on advertising. Our work is done beating the streets, meeting with candidates, calling candidates, poaching them from successful school districts. We're looking for candidates that are running towards Westlaco, not running from something. So we're going to do our best to recruit talent that show a high success rate in their respective districts. So every advertisement will redirect to jgconsulting.us. So whether it's the TASA, Texas Association of School Administrators Job Portal, that'll redirect to us. The ALAS, Association of Latino Administrator Superintendents, well, Job Portal redirects to us. All these advertisements will be casting a wide net nationwide, working simultaneously on our behalf, all the while while we're recruiting. So that's the end of the summary report. Before we go on to the leadership report and I entertain any suggestions or perhaps thoughts to revise or modify the language, any questions about the summary report?
I do have.
No, I was just going to say that I, as far as myself, I think that the proposed timelines really work out well, especially with the holidays during that time period, December seventeenth and sixteenth, and I don't know when we're going to be questioned, but as far as for me, I'm okay with moving forward with opening the application.
Okay, so is January twentieth an acceptable date for the presentation of candidates? Now, I'll remind you that we're anticipating a good volume, because there's high interest in this role. You know, I don't have a crystal ball to tell you the exact quantity until it closes, but we will provide you with updates every week. By the close of business every Friday, I will be the one to send you a report, basic overview by email, saying we've had X number of candidates representing X number of states. So that way, as we get further down, you can see, okay, our in-person meeting, we're presenting the candidates, it could be anywhere from four hours to six hours. We may, if we have a high volume, have to consider adding a second day, but what I would rather do, just to avoid interview fatigue and going through that work, if we can start earlier in the day rather than late in the evening, or early evening even, it'll give you more time, so that way you're not feeling overwhelmed, because this is going to be the first time you'll see the candidate information. Due to confidentiality, we can't disclose anything until we're behind closed doors and closed session. So January twentieth, I'll just earmark that as that's an acceptable date. Or President Quayar, good for you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Jackie, you have a question?
Oh, I was looking at the advertising plan, and just because, I think you already have plenty of candidates anyway, as you said, but there's a website, I think it's Texas ISD, or I'm not sure.
It goes on there too.
Does it go on there too?
Yeah, that's, yeah, so that fifty vacancy list I referenced, that number is, was pulled this morning from that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we have, I wish I could buy that website. They have it locked in, because I want to clean it up. But yes, it automatically goes there into every national organization. All right, so if I may suggest, we jump to the leadership profile. So again, it's entitled WISD Leadership Profile. Not very lengthy, and that's by design. We do require a lot, so you can see the first page really highlights and underscores the accomplishments of the district, leading with your about us statements. I revised some of it to be in the present tense. And then you have the second page, which is the North Star again. It's identical to what's in the summary report. I just include it in the summary report for transparency's sake for the community. So once we upload the document to the superintendent's search page, the community can see this. So this is the document that will be public-facing on our website, and again, jgconsulting.us under current searches. All of the advertisements, including texasisd.com and all the others, redirect to our website. So what I would ask is if there's any changes to those bullets on page two, any wordsmithing that you would like to do to consider, I think now would be a great time, because my goal this evening is to update this, and then tonight, share it with our technology director for him to post to our website effectively tomorrow.
I have none.
None for Mr. De La Santos? Okay. Mr. Quayar?
Pretty detailed.
Yes. All credit to my team, so you've got a chance to meet Dr. Cavassos, Dr. Hatton. They do an amazing job of putting pen to paper, and so I can't take the credit. They're the brain trust, I'm just the talking head.
They did a great job also. I saw some of the highlight videos when they were, and they had the students there and they were questioning and getting.
Oh, yeah.
It's a great video to see.
Yeah, that was great. You had a good production of camera crew there and a very engaged audience, so I really enjoyed it.
Even the parents to the community videos, highlight videos, everything, the participation.
Yeah.
Great job, sir.
Thank you. All credit to the team, you guys did an amazing job preparing, setting the stage for us. Any other comments or suggestions?
We're going to trust your experience and.
All right. Yeah, I want this to be collaborative, so if there is, you know.
Absolutely, and we appreciate that.
Yeah.
You've been very, very easy to work with, and the times that we did everything through text and everything, now I can put a face to the.
That's right, this is the first time we get to meet in person.
But we really appreciate your professionalism and the detail to what you're giving us. It's a very important decision we have to make.
Likewise, and just this meeting alone is a huge testament to the reason why this is the district of choice for candidates. The board workflow, the operational workflow of the district, it really helps and improves our ability to recruit quality candidates. We're not always fortunate and blessed to work in such a high-functioning district. Not disparaging any of my past clients, but I've been a part of some communities where there's a lot of fracture. So without saying this is going to make our jobs much easier in terms of the recruitment, because candidates are watching, you know, the board meetings, are looking at archive videos, and just the deliberate thought around your academics, your performance, what you're doing in 2022, all of the accolades that the students celebrated tonight, those are things that we want to continue to amplify. So however we can best sell Westlaco ISD, if we're falling short in any one way or the other, please come to me, I'll be your primary point of contact. We do have back office staff, and of course, you've got Dr. Cavassos, who's locally based, Dr. Hatton splits time between here in the Valley and in central Texas, but you know, we're dedicated to you, so we're eager. I'm always anxious at this point, because I'm ready to start seeing who the candidates are that start coming through the pipeline. Some of the other language in here, I won't go into the detail, it's just standard protocol. It's what we require in all of our superintendent searches. Again, you'll see the one file, the letter of interest, resume, references, transcripts, the verification forms as to initial. If there's been any impropriety with respect to their employment history, professional, or excuse me, personal backgrounds, if a candidate does not initial there, they have to write a statement of why they didn't initial. So this is a preliminary requirement before we do the background checks, but we want to be as overly cautious as we possibly can, and then we're going to provide you with all this information. And again, you're going to have access to an iPad. We're going to upload all the documents to an iPad for you to review. Each of you will receive an iPad, then you'll have access to the videos, we'll show those in closed session. They're ten minutes in length, they're four questions per candidate, and so you'll be, I'll be, I'm typically the one who's presenting the candidates. My team will be with me to answer any questions, but we're going to go through everything agnostium, so that way you're comfortable. And at the end of the day, my goal, my firm's goal, is that you tell us, man, this is a difficult decision, we don't know how to narrow it down.
I don't know if you mentioned this earlier or not, but did you say how many prescreened applicants are we going to, is there like a set number of how many, or it's open?
Yeah, so we present all candidates, rather than just, we will provide a recommendation based on our experiences, so that's one of the reasons. So that's a great question. So as a reminder, and I did share this in the interview, but I know we've slept a lot since then, but we do present candidates in two formats, Group A and Group B. And the Group A is essentially the recommendations of my firm, so I rely on Dr. Cavassos and Dr. Hatton for their input, and then I also provide input. So let's just say hypothetically, in Group A, it's the top ten out of, let's just say, forty applicants, and I'm just taking a raw number out of thin air, right? So Group A is the top ten, Group B, the delta will be thirty. You'll have access to all forty applicants in this hypothetical scenario. We're not withholding any information. As I stated, a uniqueness about us, we're not recycling candidates from one district to the other, we don't work with the stable. It's a guarantee in our contract even that we'll never recruit your superintendent away, whomever you choose to hire. So it's your decision to make. We'll make a recommendation, whether you agree with our recommendations or not, entirely up to you, but it's our duty as a firm to present you with all of the candidates. That's why I say it's going to take several hours, because I do anticipate you'll have a deep pool of talent to pull from.
So you'll present all of them, even though there's specific qualifications for the specific superintendent?
Yes, sir, and the reason being is just so that you're aware of who applied, and that way, you know, in public forum or however you want to report out how the vetting went, you can share with your constituents, the staff, the students, and the community that we screened and we vetted and we saw, and had an opportunity to review all candidates.
Okay.
We'll clearly identify who isn't qualified necessarily. Not everyone will check the box.
Right.
You know, it's nearly impossible to check every single box. You know, I have deficits in my own professional kind of background, if you will, my pedigree, so there's going to be some areas where they might miss the mark, but it's about finding those that align closest to the profile, and then who's the best fit? Who do you envision yourselves working with as your incoming superintendent? And it's almost like an epiphany, you know, I like to say it's like a light bulb comes on when you do interview, you will know who that individual is, but until you get to see the on-demand interviews, read their, because nowadays, it's not just enough to have a resume in front of you. For me, at least, I like, I'm a visual person. I want to see the person, their demeanor, their experiences expressed through video, and their comfort level, and how much they know about Westlaco, how much homework could they do about Westlaco ISD. Those are the types of impressions I think, you know, we're going to leave you with once you see all of the information in front of you. But we're not going to withhold any information. We want you to make an informed and educated decision, and that will lead us into round one. So whatever those dates are, as you think about this over the holiday season, think about potential dates for the latter part of, I guess, what did we say, early part of February, excuse me, first week and second week, and we'll discuss it in January twentieth and really do some backwards planning on, here's the date we're going to name, final round, first round, and so forth. Sound good?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Wonderful, well, thank you for indulging me. I appreciate, again, your staff and everyone giving us the space. Been an amazing opportunity working here, and we're excited for the future here. I wish everyone a wonderful holiday season, stay safe, and if you happen to be in Austin for the conference at the end of January, please don't be a stranger, we'll host an event, I'll share the details with Dr. Valdez. So if you just happen to be there for the Midwinter Conference, please join us if you can. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, take care. Bye, thank you, happy holidays.
Before we go to item eleven, let the record reflect that Dr. Jaime Rodriguez left the meeting at six thirty-two to take care of an emergency. Item eleven, closed meeting to discuss. A, personnel matters, Texas Governor's Code 551.074. One, employment of certified professional personnel. Two, resignations, retirements. Three, the. Three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code 551.074 and 551.071. A, superintendent's recommendation for the position of Director of Transportation. B, consultation with attorney regarding A, pending or contemplated litigation, B, a settlement offer, or C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the Westaco ISD under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct, other state law, Texas clarity conflicts with the chapter 551, other Texas government code, Texas government code 551.071. The time now is 8:11, and we will go into closed session.
As presented in closed session.
I have a motion by Mr. Nieto and a second by Mrs. Sustaita. Okay, well, I saw you nod your head, so, okay. Let's take it to a vote and signify your approval by saying I want to call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Sustaita?
Aye.
Coach Cerviño?
Aye.
Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three, discussion of possible action on superintendent's recommendation for the position of Director of Transportation, Dr. Valdez.
President Cuérdas, Board of Trustees, recommendation for the position of Director of Transportation is Mr. Hector Gonzalez.
Motion approved. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion by... Mr. Santos? And we had a second by... Coach Cerviño. Okay, let's take it to a vote, signify your approval by saying I want to call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Sustaita?
Aye.
Coach Cerviño?
Aye.
Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item thirteen, adjournment. Motion and the time now is eight fifty-two. This meeting is adjourned.